All those meeting to order, June 3rd, 2025, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Let's entertain a motion.
Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Approve the agendas presented.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nope. Second by Commissioner Tomlin. Alright, we're on it today. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion's unanimous. Next up under tab eight, we've got one public hearing today for a budget amendment, resolution twenty-five dash zero six dash C L dash zero one. To transfer unspent elections operating funds into the county clerk's operating fund for unforeseen expenditures. Joining us this morning is accounting specialist Rebecca Merrill. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, yes, this budget amendment will cover the cost that we incurred to remap the system um due to the changes to the mill levies.
Very good. Any questions on the resolution commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Can you just expand on that a little bit? What what mill levy had to be?
So when the component units were no longer receiving a mill levy, tax wise and munis were not working together correctly. And so we had to go in and remap everything and then do like an account reconciliation for the taxes.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Basically, when we took them from the mill to the budget allocation method due to.
We had to make the changes, yeah, to make tax wise and munis communicate correctly, basically.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? If not, we do need to open this up for a public hearing. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to this budget amendment, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
Moved approved resolution twenty-five dash zero six dash C L dash zero one budget amendment in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars.
Have a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh six C L oh one by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks Rebecca. Appreciate it. We'll see you in a little bit. Like to also recognize Representative Brady for being in attendance. Thanks for joining us this morning. At this time, uh, we've moved along to the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. If there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to address the governing body, now is the appropriate time.
Morning. Morning, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Nick Erskine. I'm the new executive director for the uh combined communications joint powers board. Uh, I look forward to working with each of you and I'm glad to be here in the county.
Very good. Congratulations, Nick.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you reaching out and wanting to get together. Look forward to learning more about you and different ways that we can get your budget down this year.
We'll do everything we can.
Any other questions or comments commissioners?
I'm really, the yay is on to the communication. So if you have any issues, and I would like to get together with you, so I'll.
Absolutely.
Check back with you.
Absolutely. Good to meet you.
Thanks for joining us. Appreciate it. Still under county resident comments and concerns, if there's anyone else. Sure.
I do not normally bring a computer and notes, but I didn't want to risk forgetting any of the key points I wanted to ask you because I have a three minute window and that's not.
Very good. Please introduce yourself.
Kim Bramwell. I'm both an employee of Southwest Counseling and I'm a committed member of this community. And what I've come to ask you is to consider your appointments on the board. And where I'm going to go with this is the important information I want to convey is both for, oh, I'm so sorry. I am so sorry. You want me to start over? No, because that would take my three minutes.
Good. Don't worry about it.
Alright, alright, my three minutes. Okay, let me just start. From since two thousand and twenty-one, there's been a troubling decline in the transparency of what's going on in the board meetings. The board meetings are no longer recorded. The minutes that are produced are very vague. They lack detail in what the key decisions were and how they were coming to those decisions. So you don't have any decision, you have no reasoning behind the decisions. Additionally, when different members of the public would attend the members or the meetings, certain board members may become aggressive, hostile. Then in turn, that discouraged the employees to not want to come. They didn't want to have open dialogue and that too eroded the trust of the leadership, which is the board. The appointment of two specific board members since two thousand and twenty-one has raised concern about individuals' agendas. Their individual influences on decisions and outcomes. And given these concerns, that I urge that you not reappoint Kayleen Logan and Christie Kapi to your Board of Southwest Counseling. Because coincidentally, the decline in transparency is during their tenure. I do not believe that their best interest of keeping the agency is up and going. The future's coming. There's changes. There's always going to be changes. There's lots of new challenges and I think that we can do it. I really do. I think that the the employees that you have are great. I think there's great board members, but there's also board members that have an agenda. And since their terms are due, I'm asking you not to reappoint them for their second term, which would be July one. If leadership continues to go down this path and limited transparencies out there, I think that's going to cause problems in decision making. The consequences could be detrimental, not all employees, but the individuals and the families that receive services from Southwest Counseling are going to be affected. And leadership must prioritize advocacy and accountability to protect. So I'm asking you guys to reestablish a board that does have transparency, that does have accountability, has integrity. And I do not feel that those two board members continuing on with the board will be that positive. There is a petition that's going around and I wanted you to know. You may already know, you may not know. But the petition I too have signed, and it's just specifically asking you not to reappoint Kayleen Logan or Christie Coffee. Again, we know it's your choice. We know that you have the county's best interest. But Commissioner Richards, you were at that last board meeting just last Wednesday. That was not a welcoming group. So I just asked that you do that. I wanted to urge you. And then I wanted to tell you the petition's out there so you're not getting bombarded and ambushed. But I do think that Southwest Counseling is a great agency. I know there's changes. Change is good. But we also need to remember that we're serving the clients and then your employees, and I'm one of them. But I'm more of a committed member of the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Bramwell. Appreciate you coming over. Any comments commissioners? We will take that under advisement.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming over. Still under county resident comments and concerns, if there's anyone else who would like to address the governing body. Not a problem. Good morning, Mr. Slat.
We have. I'm Lee Slat uh with the, uh, not with, but uh, I live in Tereview Acres subdivision and I uh really don't want to be here today, but I have been here three times now requesting that the county examine the methods, prop uh billing and stuff that the current uh management of the Clergy Improvement and Service District is using to bill the residents. This uh I helped put this thing together uh when it was born forty years ago. Uh, it came to being screaming and hollering like all babies do. And uh, we worked very difficult for uh to get this thing uh up and running. Uh, we used it under an improvement district rather than water and sewer district for specific reasons. Number one, that it give the residents better opportunity to control the uh spending and methods and what the district was going to be used for. And the other was that as an improvement district, we were able to do certain things with the approval of the residents. Uh, one of them was uh getting the streets paved and uh we succeeded uh in getting most of that done. Some of it was held up because of uh not being allowed to use uh public funds on the development portion of that area. But I have had considerable experience in dealing with uh state statutes and regulations. And we followed for many years until uh I left the board and when I did uh at the risk of uh being killed if I stayed there by my wife. I uh, I uh the board began to do things its own way and eventually we wound up in a situation where thousands upon thousands of dollars were actually stolen from the district. At the time, we went to uh the county attorney, we went to sheriff's department, we came before the commission. Commission stated it didn't want to be involved in the water and sewer district. Uh, the county attorney said that we were a private individual organization and we just couldn't get along with each other. And uh, if we would have been that, we'd have never been able to get the thousands of dollars in loans and grants that we got from the state in putting that system together, which was done by court order as uh, most of you probably know or don't. But anyway, uh we uh, we followed the statute uh and uh with some arguments from our uh attorney, but we were able to to um uh operate it until uh we had the major thefts that occurred uh prior to uh two thousand and twelve. And uh, one person was uh convicted under it, but the uh major theft that was being uh incurred as a result of things that the Board of Supervisors did uh were never addressed. We asked the county sheriff to investigate. He refused. We asked the uh county attorney to investigate. He refused. We eventually uh were able to wrest the control of the district from the the board. Partly because the board for many years had never been properly constituted. Therefore, for many years, the board, the actually the district did not really exist. The board had no authority whatsoever to do anything, collect any money, pass any rules. They just had no authority in that statutory. We were able to wrest it. It took us, uh, we found out that we were a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the city of Rock Springs. We had a bad check for fourteen thousand dollars to the state of Wyoming. We had two thousand dollars in the bank. And a computer that uh was in control by the sheriff's department. And when we got it back, it was so full of viruses that we couldn't use it. We had to go buy a new computer. We asked for some assistance from the county, which again, nobody wanted to get involved with an water and sewer districts or with an improvement district. But uh, what the county didn't look at was the statute. Statute, we're public uh, uh, we're we're a public entity, uh, division of the state of Wyoming. And uh, we are have to be follow all of our laws, statutes, regulations of uh Sweetwater County, Wyoming State, federal government, uh, probably the United Nations. Uh, if the truth were known. But anyway, we put it back together. I spent uh time on the board, then I went as operator and internal auditor. And I kept looking at the accounts and stuff that had been uh brought uh before. We found work that hadn't been done. Uh, one was an issue with the uh county rec board where uh a check valve had not been been installed or meter in the proper place. And uh so uh, we in ten years' time, we were able to develop a sufficient reserve under the uh specifics of the statute, uh, which amounted to at the time about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, which a hundred and fifty thousand was uh dedicated dictated by the uh Department of Audit. Uh, it was uh some that was uh specifically dedicated to replacement of water and sewer lines. Uh, other monies were specifically dedicated to uh doing the improvement or not improvements, but the maintenance that was needed. And uh then uh I uh retired from that position about three years ago. And uh, I retained my license the end of this last year. I officially retired for good. I did not renew my license and uh I returned to taking care of my wife twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Mr. Slat, I just got an email. Can you move the microphone closer to your mouth?
Oh, you betcha. Sure. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You, most people say I talk too loud. But uh, now uh, we're in a situation where the billing process uh at one meeting, uh, the uh board and the uh operators specifically stated that they were charging fees that we're going to create a a fund and then they could use that fund any way they wanted to. They are currently doing an improvement uh for thousands of dollars that was never okayed by the landowners as required by the statute. We're being uh charged excess for water, which is uh not permitted uh by uh constitution statute or uh the improvement district law. The uh operating and maintenance is just a chunk of money that they collect, but they no longer actually present it as uh required by the statute to develop a operating and maintenance fund directly with state related to what it actually costs to operate the improvements, which is in the statute. And what I'm asking, the statute does state that the county commission uh is uh to review the billing process to make sure that it's accurate and uh then uh it uh can then be uh presented to the to the people. The uh this this uh, this hasn't been done. And what I'm asking today is that the county attorney and the Board of County Commissioners review the situation and uh require that uh the Board of Supervisors for the Clergy Improvement and Service District act within the law. One of the conditions uh is the inflation of the uh water fee. Were charged uh about a buck and a half, a hundred cubic feet by the Joint Powers Water Board. That's then inflated to two dollars a hundred cubic feet by the board. We went through all of this forty years ago. That's not permitted. The reason it's not permitted is because the Joint Powers Water Board uses public funds to generate that water. So when we get it, that all that water has been paid for with public funds. Therefore, you cannot use public funds to create a personal benefit. Uh, personal benefit means according to the statute, as our attorney had previously stated, uh, individuals, uh entities such as an improvement district corporations are all treated under our constitution and statutes as an individual. So uh, what we're uh by that and also by the improvement district uh law, which states that uh the district uh that residents or can be um billed uh for water appropriate to what the district is billed by uh or any other item. They can pass that on to the residents by what they are being charged. There's nowhere in the statute does it allow any any improvement assessment or anything else to be inflated without relating back to what the district is asked actually charged. I'm not an attorney, but I do have many years uh involved in regulatory affairs. Spent four years as actually a a uh, uh, what do you call it? An officer of the court? Uh, as a law enforcement officer.
Mr. Slat, I don't mean to interrupt you here. Obviously, we've gone way over the the three minutes, but you have been here before and. the three minutes, but you have been here before. And so we're aware of of the history. Um, the sheriff's office did investigate this, just so you know, um back when it was originally brought to their attention. And since you were here last, um we have looked into it first. We need some contact information for you so we can get a hold of you. Um, but our attorney's office has looked into it. Um, we did find that during one of the meetings, I believe it was in April, that the board actually rescinded some of their previous resolutions um that dealt with the fees that you're referring to. So I'm not sure exactly what further you're after, but we'd be happy to to sit down with you. Um. We're aware of it. We're not just sitting on it. Uh, you did come at kind of the peak of our busy season heading into budget here, but we have had these conversations and are trying to look into, you know, the statutes and everything relative to, I think, what your complaint is. But if I understand you properly, it's it's relative to the fees that are being assessed.
Uh, yes, uh-huh. That and the improvement that's being done without uh uh improvement uh approval of the landowners as specified by statute.
Okay.
One other thing, if I may please, uh, I need to object strenuously to the three-minute limit. Uh, the constitutions of both Wyoming and the United States government allow for residents to seek redress from their appropriate uh um uh agencies, uh commissions, uh councils, uh government. And uh in order to make a presentation, uh such as what I'm trying to do here, uh to lay it out clearly and uh to approach, I can't do that in three minutes.
We would ask that you just get on the agenda for that reason, so that we have time and we can accurately schedule our our agenda and stay on task. I mean, obviously, the public's more than welcome to come up at any time, but we have to do it within reason. So if you want to put together a presentation, we'd be happy to put you on the actual agenda and that way we can give you the appropriate time that you need.
That's uh been very difficult for me for the last two years, uh just had being able to come over here and address you, gentlemen and lady. Worked with, I worked with the Mary many years. Uh, she knows me quite well. And uh she knows that I don't do things frivolously. How many years did we work together on that big sandy project? But anyway, I appreciate your attention. Uh, and uh uh since I'm no longer twenty-four hour seven now, I would meet with anyone. Uh, I had uh talked to individual uh commissioners before, but uh nothing concrete had ever been done. And uh so if you can get.
I think I have. I'm just checking your uh see if I have your correct phone number. Be assured, they are working on it, though. They are looking into it.
We'll grab you a break if you don't mind, and we'll make sure we have your contact information, and then we can sit down with you if that works.
Hey, thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming over this morning. Still under county resident comments and concerns, Representative Brady. Morning.
Morning. Thank you, Chairman. Um, can committed here. Um, I'm just um and correct me if I'm wrong, on the May twentieth uh agenda for the commissioners, that it was stated that you'd have a revised um budget received by five twenty-nine. So I'm asking if that's been posted. I can't find it online. I was wondering if it's been posted yet and if not, when and or how I can find it if I haven't found it. And when is the next budget meeting?
So it's today, um right after this meeting, which if we stay on time, will be at eleven. Um, we haven't posted anything just because it's a work in progress.
Okay.
Is here. I don't think it's online yet, but we have to statutorily have it approved by, I think it's June twentieth, something like that. So our intent is to wrap that up today, hopefully, at the budget workshop.
Okay. I think that answers everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming over. Still under county resident comments and concerns. If there's anyone else who'd like to address the governing body. Last chance. Not we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. That's going to move us right along on to tab B, hundred tab B this morning. There are eight items under the consent agenda, first being the approval of the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Second being the approval of bonds. Third, the approval of the June third, two thousand twenty-five A baits and rebates. Fourth, the approval of county vouchers, warrants, and the expenditure approval listing, as well as the commissioner report. Fifth is a request to restaff a vacant position in the county clerk's office. Sixth, the request to restaff two vacant positions in the detention center. Seven, a request to restaff a vacant position in the sheriff's office for court security. And lastly, number eight is a request to ratify the approval of the VFA grant expenses for the city of Green River. Commissioners, I would ask if there's any requests to remove any items off the consent agenda for further discussion. If not, then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Back by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. And moving right along into Commissioner comments, we've got Commissioner Richards up first, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. On the twenty-first, I attended the Airport Board Meeting. Following that, I joined Airport Director Brubaker and Board Chairman Wamsley for lunch with the Wyoming Aeronautics Commission and YDOT staff, who were given a presentation by Mr. Brubaker on the airport's master plan, followed by an in-depth tour of the new commercial terminal, a visit to the temporary terminal, as well as a quick tour of the snow removal building and the airport's snow removal equipment. We also got to see the airport's new-to-us fire truck that they purchased from the Jackson Airport, something that will vastly increase their firefighting capacity at the airport. Uh, they are on our agenda today for an update, so I won't get into any more detail and spoil all of Devon's fun, but the terminal is coming along great, moving fast, and you can really see not only the progress, but a pretty clear glimpses of what the final product is going to look like. After the years of work put into it and the many dollars put into it, it's nice to see it all coming together. On the twenty-second, I joined staff from State Outdoor Recreation and members of the Green Belt Task Force for a tour of the new Skyline Trail here in Green River, as well as some of the other projects the task force is working on. I had planned for an hour, but it turned into a three-hour tour. Three or two. Skyline Trail is going to be a great addition to the community, and I have to say the scope of what that group is able to accomplish with only a small number of resources is just staggering. They have a fantastic vision for trails throughout the Green River area and their partnership with Green River Parks is a model that we could all take a lesson from. Following that, I had lunch with the staff from Outdoor Rec, where we discussed different ideas for outdoor recreation projects in the rest of the county. It's a struggle because our Parks Department and funding for it is so limited, but Outdoor Rec and the new trust fund could offer some resources to help us accomplish some of our goals. I look forward to continuing to work with the Outdoor Recreation Collaborative in the future to try to meet those goals. From there, I headed to Cheyenne for a meeting with the Wyoming State Liquor Association, which isn't in itself related to my work as a commissioner. But at the meeting, outgoing Department of Revenue Director Brenda Henson presented to the board and provided a lot of insight uh into the effects that legislative decisions are having on revenue streams statewide. As she is fully retired now, I believe as of today, she was more than willing to tell it like she sees it, and I believe she sees it much like we do. I want to congratulate her on retiring again from the Department of Revenue and thank her for a great career serving the people of Wyoming. She's been an invaluable resource to me over the years, and her knowledge will surely be missed statewide. On the twenty-seventh, I joined in on a call with the Wyoming Chamber of Commerce for a meeting with staff from Representative Hegeman's office, followed by a meeting of the SEDC at the Rock Springs Mayor's Office. Mayor Mickelson shared that he does not believe the SEDC funding will be restored in the city's budget, effectively putting an end to the MOU between the three entities that provided for operation of the SEDC. Their final budget meeting will be the tenth, where we will know for sure, but I don't foresee any changes. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the monthly board meeting for Southwest Counseling. It was another long meeting that I tapped out of after three hours, another three-hour tour, seems to be a pattern. On the thirtieth, I remotely attended a congressional tour planning meeting. And yesterday, I attended a discussion with Grants Manager Marshall and representatives from Southwest Counseling to discuss potential uses for opioid settlement funds. I had an hour and a half scheduled for that one, and it also turned into yet another three-hour tour. I don't know, maybe it's my name that says something to do with it. Um, I can assure you that I will be turning down any offers to take a tour on on any boats named the Minnow in the near future. Looking, nobody in here is old enough to catch that reference. Looking forward tomorrow, I have a housing task force meeting. On Thursday, a chamber enterprise meeting. On Friday is our first Friday's federal partners meeting. On the tenth, there is a special meeting of the Southwest Counseling Board. On the eleventh, a NACO CEWD meeting, and that is all I have scheduled so far. One thing I do want to mention before I wrap up is that during our budget workshop two weeks ago, I mistakenly said that the city of Green River doesn't contribute to the Golden Hour Senior Center. City Administrator Clevinger emailed me to let me know that I was wrong and to provide the actual figures, so I'd like to take this opportunity to correct the record. City of Green River provides Golden Hour with twenty-two thousand dollars indirect funding, mainly for their Meals on Wheels program, and they plow the sidewalks around the center. So, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for mischaracterizing Green River's contribution. Just for perspective, however, I also want to say for the record that if our current budget holds true, we will provide Golden Hour with a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars indirect distribution, approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in in-kind support and another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital improvements to the facility over the next year. But hey, what's five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars between friends? I do want to thank Green River for the support they show their seniors and deeply apologize for not properly recognizing the twenty-two thousand dollar contribution they make to their own senior center. One final note, yesterday Linda Acker, CEO of Southwest Counseling, sent out an email announcing her pending retirement from that organization. So thank you, Linda, for your years of service there. I think that is all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the report. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Richards? If not, Commissioner Jones, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am familiar with the Minnow, so some of us are old enough to remember that. Saw article about at one time, the Minnow only probably traveled at about ten knots. So the two or so hours that they traveled, they really weren't that far offshore. On the twenty-second, I attended the Joint Powers Telecom Board Meeting. Normal business was conducted there. Uh, also on the twenty-second, uh attended the same Sweetwater County Outdoor Rec collaborative meeting that um excuse me, um Commissioner Slaughter attended. Uh, items such as the State Recreation Trust Fund and the Skyline Trail in Green River were discussed. I'd like to take a second to thank Cyril Brothers for burning the bill for the work that they did on that trail. So they uh are great partners to all of Sweetwater County and just just some great people. Um, a presentation was also given on bike packing in the red desert. I didn't really know that was a thing, but it obviously is. Pretty interesting presentation and pretty neat to see what folks were doing with that. So uh I did have to sneak out of that meeting a little bit early before it was over. So uh Commissioner Slaughter may be able to fill us in on what else took place. On the twenty-eighth, attended the Board Health Meeting. Uh, normal reports were given there. Uh, also on the twenty-eighth, attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Finance Committee Meeting. Uh, I noticed the hospital is finally starting to see money coming in from Medicare through the switch to critical access care. So that's nice. Some of this goes back as far as October. Um, so they have not been getting uh reimbursed for that uh up until now. So um the money does go back several months, but uh um they just weren't paid for all their services. They're still not yet paid in full, but progress is being made, so that's a positive thing. And another positive note is their expenses are under budget for the year. So good job to the folks up there, uh taking care of the finances. On the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, had uh multiple conversations with Land Use Director Bingham and Senator Barasso regarding the Rock Springs BLM RMP, the nightmare that never seems to go away. Uh, there was language in the one big beautiful bill, also known as HR one, uh stating our RMP as well as the Buffalo RMP and their prohibition of those RMPs being implemented. That language was stripped out in committee, stating there wasn't a significant impact to the areas financially, which of course we all know isn't true, but that's what they decided in Washington, DC. Um, HR one did pass out of the House by one vote, now goes to the Senate. Uh, so that's part of the reason for my conversations with Senator Barasso, but I would like to thank Mr. Bingham and Senator Barasso for being so accessible and and being willing to to help and and get involved. On the twenty-ninth, I met with uh John Hay to discuss the off-road trails we've been working on. If you all remember, this goes back to when we uh approved to enroll roads in the county into a trail system so we could could uh connect communities. So I'd like to thank uh John for giving me a little bit of time and and his knowledge is invaluable, so I appreciate it. Uh, lastly, I would like to wish my father a belated happy birthday. He turned eighty-six yesterday, so that concludes my report.
Very good. Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Jones's report? Eighty-six. Happy birthday. That's that's a good life. Uh, it looks like I'm up next, and I'm gonna start with the Public Works Department report. Uh, Jean emailed that to you guys yesterday with some pictures of progress for some of the construction projects going on. But in the Buildings um Department, the C Street Library Asbestos Remediation has been completed, and the contractor has started the remainder of the demolition. Sweetwater County Library in Green River's exterior concrete work is complete, and the contractor is back on track with flooring and finish work. The White Mountain Library Contractor started demo on Monday. Southwest Counseling's projects between the Joanna Modular, Washa Key, Ankeny, and Duran facilities are all progressing well. The Sweetwater County Combined Facility is progressing nicely. Building E is receiving the ceiling grid, final electrical and door hardware. In Building F, the CMU walls are complete, and the electrician is roughing in all the electrical. HVAC is progressing and working well around the trades in tight areas. The carport and tire storage areas have had their red irons set. You can see if you drive on your way here this morning. And I just clicked out of the report, so that was solid. The fire sprinkler system in Building F is ninety percent complete. We had our pre-designed kickoff meeting two weeks ago for the White Mountain HVAC upgrade upgrade project. Fifty percent design plan should be delivered for review by the middle of next week. The maintenance crew handled eighty-one work order requests in May. Road and Bridge Department crews are prepping all of our roads for their annual magnesium chloride application and hauling gravel to some of the areas to help with cross-slope drainage. Crews are also working on installing new street signs in North Rock Springs and Jamestown. Engineering Department, the paint striping contractor is eighty percent complete with the machine striping of various county roads and forty percent complete with the hand striping. The contractor on the County Road Fifteen Nine Mile Road reconstruction project started removing asphalt and subgrade two weeks ago. They're currently installing new culverts and replacing old culverts to help with roadside drainage. Traffic to the power plant seems to be adapting to the changing road conditions and traffic control patterns. We had our pre-bid meeting for the culvert lining project for Farson Second North County Road One-O-One, and bids are to be turned in to us this Thursday, so they'll be presented to the board here during the June seventeenth meeting. Parks and Recreation crews are out in full force, taking care of the parks, mowing, prepping fields, and cleaning pavilions. And this is probably my favorite part, though very frustrating. Uh, Jean reports in this episode of why we can't have nice things. I need to report that three of our parks were vandalized in one way or another over this past weekend. Thursday night or early Friday morning, the new bathroom partitions in one of the bathrooms at Crossroads were intentionally locked, and then the doors were kicked in, thereby damaging the locks on the doors and tweaking the door hinges. These are the partitions that were installed during the first week of May, after the previous ones had to be removed because of similar damage. Then on Saturday morning, Jean was notified by sheriff's deputy that all of the porta-potties at Jamestown Park had been tipped over, allowing the contents to be spilled. The owner of the porta-potties had to be called to clean up the mess and re-stake them. Uh, then on Sunday morning, at Crossroads Park, people were trying to people trying to complete uh donuts on the road to the ball fields, went off the road and ran into the fence, damaging a post and the fence itself. So once again, a couple of people that ruin it for all. It's a little bit frustrating. I mean, we've had various complaints about some of the conditions of the parks and trying to keep up with that and. I mean, we've had various complaints about some of the conditions of the parks and trying to keep up with that and get them turned back around. We're later today having discussions about the potential for a park study and how we can improve those. And then we have continued people in the community that can't help themselves but to go vandalize things. So it's a very rural setting as far as the county parks, very spread out. We can't be everywhere all the time. So anyone in the public that sees any of that going on, please help us out, report it, call the sheriff's office. And we certainly don't want to get to the point where we have to lock everything because of a few people. So pictures in the report of the progress at all of those projects mentioned. And it looks like things are progressing quite well on the construction side of things. Some are relative slow a couple of weeks. I missed Young at Heart's monthly board meeting due to the Rock Springs High School graduation. I don't know who decided to have that on a Tuesday evening, but I did attend that, and so I missed that meeting. I had a meeting with Christina Marshall and Commissioner Slaughter last week in regards to the opioid funds and trying to make a plan forward with those. And we've had several mentions or conversations about that, but we're actually going to put it to work and look forward to that. Christina is going to present to us at our next meeting. We've had conversations with Treatment Court and Southwest Counseling, and I believe even the sheriff's office in regards to the different needs and or uses that some of those funds can be utilized towards. So the presentation in a couple of weeks will help kind of, I guess, draw that line where we can start expending those funds as we head into fiscal year 26. So appreciate Christina and everyone's efforts in trying to get that ball finally rolling. Commissioner Richards and I received an email from Mayor Mickelson last week inviting us to, I guess that's a conference in Idaho Falls, and it's through the Idaho Nuclear Laboratory. They're hosting a two-day event in July, and he's asked for our interest and or attendance. The problem is it's over our July 15th meeting. And so for Rock Springs, Green River, and ourselves, if we decide to go, that would mean we'd either have to change that meeting and or one or two of us miss the meeting. So I don't know if there's any interest in that. I hate having to move a meeting. But perhaps we can have some follow-up conversations on that. I don't think all five of us necessarily need to go, so we can probably make it work. But wanted to mention that anyway. I've got the mayor and commissioners lunching tomorrow. It's the first one in a couple of months. So I look forward to catching up with them and trying to tap them for more money that they don't have, just like us. I've got a meeting with Nick next week from the Combined Communications Center to learn more about him. Appreciate him reaching out. And aside from that, commissioners, it's just been all things budget and trying to find a way to balance our funds and try and get caught up on some capital projects and just a numbers shifting game. So it'll be interesting conversations this afternoon, but my hope is that we wrap it up and get back to business. So with that, that concludes my report. I'd stand for any questions. None. Commissioner Slaughter, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I think the first thing I would like to state is I'm feeling a little bit like Thurston Howell III, referring once again back to Commissioner Richards and his alluding to Gilligan's Island. On Thursday, I am going to be going out to Buckboard Marina to actually do a trial tour of what's going to take place for congressional delegation or the congressional staffers when they come in on the 6th of August. So it will supposedly be a one-hour tour. I will make sure that I am not on the Minnow, and we'll see how that goes. Due to technical difficulties this morning, I have lost my commissioner comments, which I so diligently worked on yesterday and this morning. So this will be a little shorter as I am one of the last commissioners. A lot of what we, what I had done was redundant, so that will help. So I'll start on the 21st. I missed the county monthly museum board meeting. I did speak with Museum Director Dave Mead, let him know I would not be in attendance at that meeting. We had this discussion. He told me he didn't think that it was that important that I was there. The big issue that they were working with at that point in time was the budget once again. And I did let him know that we will be talking about component units budgets this morning, and he will try to be in attendance for that this morning. On the 22nd, I attended the CLG meeting in Lyman. We had a report from Trinity Lewis of Congresswoman Hegeman's office. She gave an update on the big beautiful bill, which is before our United States, was before our United States Congress. Lindy Lynn from Senator Lummis's office reported that the Buffalo and Rock Springs RMPs are still in effect due to their Record of Decision. The Rock Springs RMP Record of Decision was December 20th. She wanted to remind everyone that that was the case. Danielle Betancourt gave reports on all of the federal actions which are taking place at this point in time, which there are many, too many to talk about at this point. But some of the things that were other things that came out of that meeting that were interesting. Commissioner Conley from Lincoln County reported that Oleon is planning a huge wind farm near Exxon and that there are several data centers which are planned near O'Pal. They are going to be 45,000 square foot buildings, which will be powered by solar panels on the roofs of those buildings. Very interesting. We, as a board, agreed to have Danielle draft a letter to move back to pre-Biden air quality agreements to try and benefit our local energy industries. And another thing that we asked Danielle to address was a proposed BLM land swap, which will swap three miles, three square miles of land on Miller Mountain out just outside of La Barge, which is extensively used by Sweetwater County residents during the hunting seasons. So we are definitely not in favor of seeing the BLM transfer that land to private ownership in that area. On the 23rd, I worked with the Bank of Oklahoma on our trustee bank for the specific purpose tax on re-implementing our wire instructions for each of the entities that are receiving money from that specific purpose tax. Due to some issues within the financial industry, they are tightening their restrictions on requisitions and how those will be handled. So we were able to get through that, and we have set up new new accounts and new methods for our entities to receive that funding through the bank. On Thursday, the 29th, as Chairman West alluded to, I met with he and Christina Marshall on the opioid settlement. As he stated, we'll be talking a little bit more about that later today and also next in our next meeting when Christina presents to us. On the 30th, I participated in our monthly congressional tour planning meeting, gave updates on the speakers, which we are going to have in place for our portion or our leg of that tour. And just updated a few of the isolated items which are going to take place for that tour. It looks like some of the other counties have now gotten several of their items in line, and it looks like it's going to be a really good tour that these congressional staffers will be able to participate in. I then participated in the graduation. Well, I didn't participate. I actually went to the graduation and had a granddaughter who graduated from Green River High School over the weekend. Congratulations to Shady Stevenson, my granddaughter, for doing that. Then this morning, I was working on the specific purpose tax and my commissioner comments. And somehow, when I went to save my commissioner comments, I saved the specific purpose tax, which I already had. So I lost those, as I had stated. I will be trying to attend the enterprise meeting on Thursday, the federal partners meeting on Friday. And as I stated, on Thursday, I'll be going out to Buckboard to look at the menu that is going to be used for congressional tour, along with taking a boat tour to give us some idea of what the congressional staffers will be looking at and see if we can maybe make additions or modifications to it that may benefit us or them in that in that tour. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will close my remarks and be very thankful that I was able to get through this without having my normal copy, which I have had for the last 63 straight meetings. You'd think that I would be able to manage it for this one. And I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. It's better when you just wing it. You just wing it, and then you say all the wrong things, you know? That's pretty good for not having your report. Congratulations to your granddaughter. Interesting on the data center. So you said solar. And I believe when Ron was here last meeting, when we were quizzing him about that, he said that those data centers take more power than the cities of Rock Springs and Green River combined. So that's either some good solar or a pretty small data center.
Yeah, it was. It was very interesting to hear because if my understanding was correct, there's supposed to be six of these 45,000 square foot buildings, and they will be using solar for their and maybe not for all of their power, but for a significant portion of that.
Very good. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Slaughter's report? If not, Commissioner Toman, you have one and a half minutes.
I have a short report because I have had my fingers in the mud at the farm, struggling with electrical brownout shutdowns on the pivots, but mostly due to the high winds and some mechanical issues. And a greater challenge is trying to make water run uphill on the flood irrigation portions. But the deer and the antelope are very happy sampling the new crops, so that's good news. The 27th, I attended the Golden Hour Board Meeting. We discussed budget issues. On the 28th, I participated in UW Extension Interviews for the Consumer Vitality Health Position. That's ongoing. The 28th, that evening, I attended the Golden Hour Murder Mystery Dinner. It was a fundraiser for the Green River High School Theater students as well as for Golden Hour. It was well-attended and a great shrimp boiled dinner was served. The 29th, I attended Farson High School Graduation. Special congratulations to Rebecca Smith as valedictorian. Her father Luke works for the county and maintains all of the roads in the Eden Valley. So great job, Rebecca. On the 3rd, I, yesterday, I attended a Zoom meeting on the Wyoming Colorado River Advisory Committee, and that is heating up because that Colorado Compact expires in 2027. So scary. As the expiration draws near, Wyoming and the other Upper Basin states are seeking ways to come to agreement to avoid the courts or congressional action on how the waters coming from our Green River will be affected. And 2025 is not shaping up so good as a as a good water year. We're having drought issues, and this adds to our issues with the Colorado Compact. The seven Upper Basin states are seeking to contribute to a solution through voluntary conservation efforts. Two subcommittees of the Wyoming group are looking to combine water banking in the Fontana Reserve and voluntary conservation programs. So it's really important that the public watch for the upcoming meetings to offer input on these measures. They're having a high-speed this through the summer, trying to get some more public input. In July and August, they will be having regional meetings. The greatest concern is to protect water for the state of Wyoming and the water rights holders. Upcoming federal partners on Friday morning. On the 12th, I've been asked to welcome the members of the Fraternal Order of Eagles for their state convention to be held in Green River. And congratulations to Robbie Delore for breaking the record for the rocking chair fundraiser marathon. She, 72 hours, broke a record. On the 16th, have library board meeting, and the 15th is Father's Day. Remember your fathers. And just on a national note, we received notice that Terry Wolf, Commissioner from Washakee County, was named the Outstanding Public Lands Committee Member of the National Association of County-Elected Officials. And that was, he participates twice a year for years, fighting for our federal land issues and and getting our PILT money, our payment in lieu of taxes. His dedication, I don't know how many years he's been on those committees, and he's never missed a meeting, fighting for Wyoming and defending our our concerns with the federal lands. So I just wanted to note that. Thank you. I did it. Sure.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your report. And thanks, the last meeting for lunch. Commissioner Toman took us to Golden Hour and bought us lunch. So appreciate that. Enjoyed those conversations.
Thank you. They enjoyed having you. They mentioned that in the meeting.
Any questions or comments for Commissioner Toman's report? If not, nice work, commissioners. That concludes the commissioner comments portion of the agenda. That's going to move us right along into tab C, which is the action and presentation items portion. First up, we've got the award of the fiscal year 2025 CMAC Dust Control Project. And joining us this morning is Public Works Director Gene Legursky. Good morning, Gene.
Thank you, Chairman West. Fellow commissioners, what you have before you is the award of the fiscal year 2025 CMAC Dust Control Project. So if you guys remember last meeting, you guys rejected all bids because we did not have concurrence from YDOT. I would actually like to change the motion if you guys so choose to approve this. We did receive concurrence yesterday afternoon from YDOT on this bid. So if you guys choose to do that, just remove the wording on the end that we need to receive concurrence from YDOT. Other than that, the contractor didn't raise his price. Everything was completed, and we'll go forward just two weeks later.
Very good. Thanks, Gene. Questions or comments on the CMAC award?
How many miles are we doing this year?
I can't remember. I thought we had 85, something like that. Well, combination of dust control and CMAC. CMAC, we're only doing maybe 30, mostly out around the Wam Sutter area, Wam Sutter North, Thad Road, Lumen. That's the only thing that CMAC would pay for. The rest of the county, you know, everything, Patrick Draw, everything around North Rock Springs, everything around Green River, everything around Granger, the parks and stuff like that gets paid out of dust control money, which is fuel tax. We bid them both together, so we make sure we have the same contract just for organization. But the rest of those, the other 40, 50 miles is directly out of dust control.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to award the bid for the fiscal year 2025 CMAC Dust Control Project, Dustbusters Enterprises LLC, and the sum of $838,940, and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary project documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Next on the list here, right on track, is the Castle Rock Hospital District Quarterly Ambulance Update. Believe they're hiding out in the hallway there.
Well, good morning.
Howdy.
You guys are in the hot seat. We're ready for you.
I guess I'm going first. So we sent some more information this month as far as our runs and stuff. We've continued to be busy since the last time I saw all of you. We included a little bit different thing this time, kind of give you an idea of what kind of calls we go on. So it's on this graph, just to, you know, let you see a little bit more. Of course, our number one call that we get is falls, and then it kind of goes down from there. And we also included a new graph or a new thing from Image Trend, and it's the Runs by Zone. This is still a work in progress, but just to give you an idea, so the ones in RS are the city of Rock Springs, and this is from July 1st, sorry, January 1st to March 31st. The GR ones are specifically Green River, the county. You see the IFTs are transports that we do inter-facility transports. So those can be to Utah. Some of them are within the towns to nursing homes and things like that. The RS to GR, that is when we have our Rock Springs crews having to come to Green River for a call. And then the GR to RS is, sorry, my phone is ringing, when the Green River crews have to go over there because the Rock Springs ones are busy. We do have the random one at the bottom, and that is accounted for with having to go to Manila, and we don't have that set up as a zone at this point. So as far as our staffing goes, we've had some turnover in our advanced skilled staff. And so that's hit us with quite a significant amount of overtime recently. We have people that are on military leave, people that have left for various personal reasons. And so you'll see that our overtime is still fairly high, but it's still a work in progress. And we've been able to hire our basic life support staff. And so hopefully that will continue to reduce our overtime and help us manage our finances a little bit easier. And then, of course, I included the maps on there just to give you an idea of the locations of places that we go to within the county.
Thanks, Kim. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
On your bar graph that you had there that we're talking about?
Yeah.
So it looks like the second highest one is No Other Appropriate Choice. Can you expand on that? Why it's so much higher?
Yeah. So, and I apologize, I did highlight that to talk to you about. We have to go based on what Image Trend gets us and that's set with the state. And so if there's things that we get called to that don't quite fit into the choices that they give us, that's what we have to mark.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense? And so it's a variety of, of different things that don't fall within these specific ones below or next to it.
Very good. How's everything else going? What challenges are you faced with? Just staffing like always, it seems like?
Staffing like always.
Like all of us, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But overall, our staff, you know, with all of the various things that we've had, the critical calls that we've had, they're doing fantastic. They're doing really good. We completed an EMT basic class. We've had, I think as of yesterday, 10 people that have passed the national test. Some people are still testing. We have another class that's going to be starting this month. And we have a lot of interest in that. So, and that's the basic EMT, which gives us the BLS staff. And that's where we've been able to pull quite a few new staff members from that class. So overall, it's going really good.
Questions or comments for Kim?
All right.
Off easy, I guess.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The numbers guy.
Morning Todd. Hey, good morning. Looking for numbers. The numbers look really similar, similar to last year. Last year, we, we have under contract a max subsidy of, of 1.8 million, depending on our losses. Last year, we requested 1.6 million. And then we ended up submitting vouchers for 1.477 million, just because we trued it up at the end of the year. This year, we're requesting 50,000 less than last year, which is 1.55 million. The act was going to be less than that when, when we actually submit the vouchers, depending on how the year ends through June 30th, which we're on track to be really close to last year. So I'm expecting an actual reduction from the max 1.8 million of about 350,000 is my best estimate at this time. And yeah, yeah, we're doing, we're doing okay. The struggle, like Kim has said, has been with our wages. We, we had pretty substantial increase in overtime year over year and that impacts wages. We had a substantial decrease in legal costs. We had an attempt to unionize the last fiscal year, which we didn't have any, any legal challenges this year. So that was an improvement on our financials. And then we were a little bit busier this year too, on our emergency 911 responses. A little bit slower on, we're trending down on our long distance transports. So the ground transfers to hospitals in Utah, those are profitable for us. Those help make up some of our losses. We did see an increase in the airport transfers, which makes sense. So we're transferring more people to the airports so they can be flown on fixed wing to, to hospitals. So if they're not going via ground, they're going via air. Those are also profitable, but it's a lot less dollars per, per transport because it's a lot less miles going to the airport versus taking them all the way to the airport or all the way to a hospital in Utah. In terms of managing our, our contract adjustments, our bad debt, very similar to last year. So really those are the big changes year over years is wages increasing, overall top line revenue increasing slightly over the prior year, primarily driven by those 911 responses throughout the county. And then legal costs coming down too. So all in all, it, it looks like a similar year to last year, which we're happy with. We're happy to be able to come, come to you and say, let's, let's reduce the subsidy again next year.
Very good. Any additional comments or questions for Todd? Commissioner Slaughter?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Todd, you know, just a comment, you know, it, it looks to me, I'm pleased to hear things are going well with the, the medical service. But it, it looks to me like the contract is kind of working as it was intended to. So, you know, pleased with what was done with respect to that. And we appreciate the fact that you are doing, as you stated you would do, trying to come in under that 1.8 subsidy. You've done that each year and we appreciate the fact that you're doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we needed that this year. So it's been a
Yeah.
It's been a challenge this budget season and we're not
Yeah, for sure.
Sounds like things are heading in the right direction. So keep up the good work.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it. I know.
Sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to give you a quick update on one of our pending projects. We spoke a little bit last meeting about our construction and we're getting ready to break ground here in about five weeks. We're at the final phase for the new ambulance barn that's going to be located on Gateway as far as design goes. We're getting our costs today from our contractor. We have a meeting this afternoon to get final costs. One of the, kind of the bigger challenges that we're facing here locally is the amount of subs and the lack of competition in Sweetwater County is kind of driving up some prices. And we also are experiencing maybe a little challenge with tariffs that are going to be impacting the cost of the supplies for building. So I had a call actually this morning with one of our architects and we were kind of discussing some of those things. So we'll let you know final numbers and, you know, right now, the contract that we have with the county helps pay for the lease in the current building that we have. And so we're going to, you know, structure that similarly with the construction and it won't increase significantly what the county is going to be, what we'll ask you to help support. So we're hoping that just by having a more centrally located facility in Rock Springs, we'll be able to respond to some of those higher volume areas a little bit quicker. And also just to have kind of a newer updated space for staff and safety and those kinds of things as well. So anyway, I wanted to let you know about that. And then also just to give kudos to our ambulance crews. I mean, there have been a lot of things lately in the community where EMS has become kind of forefront of the news and helping, you know, our citizens. And I just wanted to thank our staff publicly for everything that they've been doing. We're about to hit a really busy time with all of the events, rodeos, you know, the horse races, all the things. And they get stretched pretty thin. So if you as Commissioners have any feedback for us, you know, and want to let us know there's certain things that you really want us to do, we are, we're hoping to be able to say yes to everything. But like Kim said, there's really only so many people to go around as well. So our staff just work really, really hard and we appreciate them. So. Anyway, thank you so much for supporting us. The contract, like you mentioned, I feel like the contract is working as it was intended as well. Being able to support each other between Rock Springs and Green River and do those standbys, staging for one another. When we went from having two different services, when it was Rock Springs and Green River, one of the challenges that we did face is that we didn't necessarily know when both ambulances were out in Rock Springs. And now because we have that communication, we can plan and get midway to Rock Springs to be able to help. Because as you see in the financials, there's a lot more calls in Rock Springs than there are in Green River. So I feel like that's working well. But staffing is still a challenge, finding the people. But we're doing a good job now of developing some classes. I think I had reported to you maybe last time or the time before that we had really hoped that Western Wyoming Community College could start offering some more classes as well. And unfortunately, it's kind of the same thing with the professors. You just don't have the people that have the expertise to be able to teach either. So they did do a class, finished it up recently, but we're still having to teach a lot of those classes ourself with the support of the state. So anyway, it's not without its challenges, but we're happy to do it and just appreciate you guys supporting us through that. So.
Thanks Bailey. Appreciate that. What, what is that construction going to cost? I know you're waiting on some of the different changes.
Um, at this point, we've got, it's about an 8,000 square foot building with six bays or six, I guess, three bays that are passed through for two ambulances each. That's about 4,000 square feet. And then we've got another 4,000 square feet of operational space, sleeping space for the staff. And it's coming, the last estimate that we had was between 3.5 and $4 million.
Just curious.
Yeah. Yeah. And our board, our board did a few months ago, increased the budget for us. We had budgeted less than that. And then as construction goes, you know, prices go up and we were a little surprised. But we're happy with the team that we have and we're hopeful, you know, that they can stay on timeline because that's another big thing for us. So we want to break ground before the fall and get it operational before next winter as well. So.
Very good. Additional comments or questions? Thanks for coming over. I know you were concerned if it was good timing with all the fun we've been having with budget, but it's kind of a nice change of pace. So we appreciate that. And you picked a good day because we got a pretty light agenda. So.
Okay, good.
Appreciate all you guys do and thanks for coming to see us.
Thanks for having us.
Good luck over the busy summer especially.
Appreciate the expanded reports. They're very helpful to understand what you're doing.
You too. Next under tab C is item number three. We've got the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Agreement for the Transfer of Entitlements. And joining us is the Airport Director. We haven't seen you in a while. We've heard a lot about you though. All your fun you've been having out there, but Devin Brewbaker, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, I think lately, if you don't see me, it's probably a good thing, but I, I am pleased to be here today, not with any asks or with any bad news for the first time in a lot of years. And so I, I'm excited to give you an update, but for the immediate item on your agenda, in the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, each airport across the country gets an apportionment every year. For us, that's 1.3 million dollars and most of the airports in Wyoming, that's 1.3 million dollars. And that's to be used on approved, FA-approved capital projects. What we can do if we don't have a use for those funds in any one year is we can hold them for future years. We can do that for up to, I believe, three years right now. But what the FA doesn't like to see when we do that is it creates a higher carryover for them in their financials. And then the formulas for discretionary grants in the individual regions adversely are impacted by carryover. I won't dive into the weeds all that because I don't truly fully understand it. It's very complicated. So what the FA does to allow that carryover number nationwide and regionally to be lower is they allow airports to transfer funds between each other. So if we say we have a project this year and we need extra money, we can, if you will, borrow money from another airport that doesn't need their money this year. So what happened is in fiscal year 24, both the Cheyenne Regional Airport and, or I'm sorry, the Sheridan Regional Airport or Sheridan County Airport and the Laramie Regional Airport, neither of them had a project that year, that year. They were saving their money for a larger project this year and next year. So we borrowed that money from them. You all already accepted those grants. And I brought it up at that time that this was transfer money. And what we do then is this year and next year, we transfer that money back. So this year, we'll be transferring our 1.3 million back to Sheridan. And next year, we'll transfer our 1.3 million to Laramie. What this does and what it allowed us to do with the terminal project is keep from coming to you to ask for 2.6 million dollars of taxpayer dollars towards a project. So this is, there's a lot of benefits. One of our local news outlets ran an article today about it or yesterday about it, and there's some questions on there. The airport Facebook page actually responded to try to address those concerns with the community that we're not writing a check. You're not cutting a check. The airport's not cutting a check. This strictly an administrative transfer at the federal level, but we have to go through this document to be able to do that. So by doing this, it saved our community a lot of money. It allowed the FA to have better formulas for discretionary, which in the end helps us compete for discretionary. And anytime we can transfer money between airports, it's just helping build the system stronger. So hopefully that answers any questions you might have. Happy to answer any others you might have. This is strictly an administrative process that has to happen. And I'll be back next year to do the exact same thing, to send 1.3 million of our funds to Laramie, paying back for the 2.6 we got last year.
And I appreciate that explanation and for clarifying that Devin, I saw that article and basically they helped us out. So we're just returning the favors more or less what's happening there. So yeah. Some strategic ways of finding the funds you needed to get the project done, and this was one of them. So good job on that regard. Questions or comments on the request? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $1,300,000 in Airport Improvement Program entitlements from the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport to the Sheridan County Airport and authorize the chairman to execute the required documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. It's going to bring us to our last item on the agenda today, which is Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport update. Laura, back to you.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully be able to get you back on schedule or ahead of schedule. I think we're slightly ahead and I'll do my best to keep it that way. So just while I was here, gave, gave me an opportunity to do an update on the airport. Last time I was here was last summer to do an update on the airport and some was good, some was doom and gloom. So I, I think mostly we're going to be positive today. Just a reminder of who our board members are. Your appointees to the board are Dr. Pete Jensen, Sean Valentine and Mayor Pete Rust. And then the Rock Springs appointees are Jim Wamsley and Alex Visser. Matt McBurnett recently resigned from the board due to some personal challenges he's facing. And, and Alex stepped into his spot and we really appreciate Matt's time and look forward to welcoming Alex on and, and serving in a great capacity there. I will point out Pete Rust's term expires June 30th, I believe. And so I'm hoping that his application is on file. He says it is. For you all, hopefully at the next meeting to, to consider his reappointment, which the board and on behalf of Mr. Wamsley or Chairman Wamsley, we would wholeheartedly support if, if it's your will and your pleasure to do so. I always like to highlight our team as well at the airport. We don't have a big one, so it's easy to highlight them. There's nine of us total that basically do everything except for TSA, airline and rental car. We do everything on the airfield. We do our aircraft rescue firefighting, our medical response, our maintenance, our general aviation operations, including customer service and fueling. We have 67 lane miles of pavement, which to Gene, that's a very small number, but to us, it's a very big number. We also have hundreds of thousands of square foot of facilities that we have to maintain. We do most of our fleet maintenance in-house. I would say 99% of it is done in-house and only occasionally call for contractual support. So this team, I want to point out that the average longevity of our nine-person team is 15.2 years. When people come to work for the airport, unless a personal circumstance takes them away, they tend to stick around. And so we are really prideful on that, the fact that we take really good care of our employees in terms of quality of life balance and giving them the training and the resources to be successful and being able to keep those nine is great. It also saves taxpayer dollars to retrain or bring in a new hire for the airport, to train them to be a firefighter, to train them to be an aircraft fueler, to train them to be aircraft maintenance and emergency medical responder, and a whole list of other certifications and requirements we have at the airport. It is thousands and thousands and even tens of thousands of dollars to bring in a new employee. Some key highlights and one item I'm going to say right off the bat that I forgot to include on this list. And thankfully Castle Rock was here to help remind me. But back at the beginning of April, we had our triennial emergency exercise. So every three years, we're required to do a full-scale emergency exercise at the airport. And thanks to the great support of all of our mutual aid partners, whether that be our medics, our law enforcement, our fire department, the hospital, emergency management, the, you know, I said law enforcement, but includes your sheriff's office, your emergency management team, the Department of Health, you name it, anybody that touches emergency response in our community was involved in this. And it was one of our best, if not the best exercises ever. We, the goal is to learn. We're never going to get it all right. That, that's not the purpose of doing an exercise. It's so we can practice together and learn where our weaknesses are so we can get better. We've identified those and we are working on the solutions to those problems. Many of them have already been solved, we believe. But there's a few that require some capital investment over the course of a couple of years to address incident command structure and things like that. But huge shout out to all the mutual aid partners in our community that stepped up big to help us, especially just shortly after a real world mass casualty in our community. That wasn't easy to ask them to do because there's obviously challenges still existing for some people as a result of that. To ask them to step right back into a, what can be a high stress situation was not an easy thing to do and many of them did it. So we really appreciate that. And a special thank you to all of your staff. The Sweetwater County Sheriff's Office did a fantastic job. The emergency management team of one did a fantastic job. But Jesse is doing fantastic work over there for your emergency management and the coordination and the communication that he's been helping with around the county for this was really instrumental. So if you get a chance to thank Jesse, please do that because he's really doing a great job over there for you guys, at least from my perspective. So. And then I'll jump right into the rest of these highlights. I think I mentioned to you last summer that I had applied for a little over two and a half million dollars of Governor's Edge of Matching Funds for the terminal project. The presentation I gave last year was this was a pending funding amount for the terminal. We were successful in securing all 2.54 million dollars. And just late last week, we received the check for that. It's the most beautiful form of funding that you can receive where it's a not, it's not a reimbursable process. You get the funding and as long as you You get the funding and as long as you put the, use the grant money that it's matching to its fullest, then you don't have to pay any back. But if we don't use all the federal funds, then we have to pay back the proportionate amount. But it really got us over the top on our terminal project and was the final piece of the puzzle to put it all together. So we secured that check out here last week in April. We also had our zero discrepancy FA inspection. I joke with folks that it's a three-day colonoscopy from the FA. They come in and they would literally look at every single thing. They look at the edges of your pavement. Is there enough drop off the edge of your pavement? Is there too much? Every light, every sign, your markings, are they a quarter inch too wide, a quarter inch too long? They look at all of our training records, our training paperwork, they test our fire response. They test all of our fueling systems and everything. So it's a three-day, fully intensive inspection. And our team passed with zero discrepancies, which is fantastic. So over the last decade, I think we're eight out of 10 with zero discrepancies. In the two years we did have discrepancies, they were a paperwork issue in terms of actually documenting an inspection that was performed, just not documented. So our team is doing a fantastic job and huge shout out to them. Clean audit, another clean audit. We like seeing those. I think everybody does. We have new rental car agreement that'll go into effect when we move into the new terminal. Really positive economic numbers there that helped us deliver savings on our funding requests this year. And then our new fuel supplier agreement, we're in final negotiations on that. That should wrap up at our June board meeting. We should hopefully have a contract ready to approve for the board at that time. That also has considerable economic advantages in it. And our easiest way of keeping our costs down, and that's reflected in our funding request as well, that you all saw that was lower. New cell phone tower is up in the air, up at the airport. They hung the communications equipment up on the tower. They're doing the underground work as we speak right now. So I'm hopeful within the next week or two, we hopefully will have good cell service at the airport finally. Ever since they upgraded to 5G in town, the service at the airport has gone downhill. So having this new cell phone tower at the airport is going to be a huge benefit. Great thing is it didn't cost us any money. They're actually over 40 years paying us 1.3 million dollars to have it at the airport. So it becomes a great revenue source for us. We closed out all litigation. I should have put a bunch of asterisk, not asterisks, but exclamation points behind that. Since I was in here last time, our litigation on the construction has been closed out and settled. And our litigation with our friends at PETA has been settled and closed out. Don't read or don't believe everything you read online about that settlement with PETA. The airport board did not pay PETA, to be clear. Our insurance carrier paid it to make it go away. But the airport board did not make any payments to PETA. So just want to clarify what's been reported by the other party in that settlement. And then our fuel sales, as many of you know, that's our largest source of revenue at the airport is our fuel sales, jet fuel and avgas. And we, I don't want to jinx it, but we are barring a catastrophe going to blow away our previous high of 478,000 gallons of jet. We should be right at or slightly above 500,000 gallons this year, which is awesome to see that. We haven't been that high since going back to, I believe it was 2018. So and then our avgas sales are quite strong as well. Terminal update. Got some pictures here. This, I took these yesterday afternoon. So obviously some things could have changed since yesterday afternoon. But this is exterior from right about where the rental car parking lot will be. You can see a lot of the finishes on the exterior coming to be and starting to look really nice. This is the exterior from the apron side. I was staying inside the construction fence line. So it doesn't give you a great, necessarily a great angle. I could have went out on the airfield, just ran out of time. That's the hold room where you see the big tall glass windows. Those aren't glass yet, obviously, but glass will be going in here soon. This is the baggage claim area. You can see the ceiling grid going in. And if you look really hard in the, kind of the middle left of the picture, you can actually see some of the the wood, they're not wood, they're metal, but they look like wood. Linear wood ceilings there that are going in as well. You see the stacked stone veneer, the baggage claim belt. That big opening to the right is going to be a glass wall that separates the secured area from the public area. And then this is just on the other side of that glass, future glass wall, looking at the bathroom module, if you will, the restrooms, the men's, women's, family restroom, the pet relief room and the mother's room back in that area, as well as gate two, we'll have two gates, gate two is right there to the right. You can see tile going in and finishes going in, ceiling grid, light fixtures, all those kinds of things. This is in the old terminal. This is part of the old terminal where the bathrooms were. The entrance you see to the right there is where the, where you would leave after you came in off a flight from baggage claim. That whole area, I think I shared with many of you, we demoed that whole area in a change order due to some existing conditions we found. And so we're going in with all new layout and floor plan and increased bathroom sizes, which will make a big difference. I don't know about you, but when I travel, one of the first things I judge an airport on is their bathrooms. And are they old? Are they dingy? Are they small? Are they cramped? Is there enough fixtures, things like that? Maybe that's just me as an airport professional talking, but when I go into an airport, is there some of the things that, you know, stand out to me right away? So over to the left is where the ticket counters and the checkpoint and everything will be. This is where the ticket counters go. You can see the conveyor system installed. That'll take bags back to the screening room for TSA and then ultimately out to the aircraft. And some information just about the project cost, we are currently sitting at 43,327,450. The local share cost of this project still remains at 1,250,000, which equates to 2.9% of the project cost. The contractual substantial completion is end of August. Contractual final completion is first week of October. No known scheduled delays at this time. And it is currently the expectation that, and I don't expect it to change, that we will be moving into the terminal last week of August. For some of you, I've shared that date with you. I'll share it with all of you. If you have, if you don't have it in your calendar, we're just not ready to do an announcement publicly on that, but we do have a date. And we're narrowing in times and things like that for a grand opening ceremony. Encourage you all to come up for a tour island, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Richards, you've seen it almost every month when you come up for board meetings and I appreciate that. The rest of you are more than welcome to call and schedule a time to come up and get a tour. I think everybody except for Chairman West probably needs to call and schedule a time. Chairman West probably just can put his hard hat on and walk in. But I don't know that you've even been up on the project or if you have, it's been a little bit, so.
I was afraid you were going to ask for money, so I've been staying away.
Well, that, that situation is not a risk anymore. So you are more than welcome to come up, all of you are. Quick update on air service. Just wanted to give you a little bit of industry trends. If there is anything negative in this presentation, I'll just be talking a little about the realities of air service. I do this every time I come just to help right-size expectations of what, what's attainable for rural communities like ours. Regional airline costs have increased by 42% since 2019. Of that, making that up is labor at 107%. Maintenance is up 54%. This is based on DOT statistics from airline reports. So not necessarily specific to SkyWest, but all regional carriers combined, these are the increases. Major airlines continue to shift away from smaller aircraft, significantly reducing the options for smaller communities like ours. 50-seat or smaller aircraft use is down from 45% to 10% of all US flights since 2019. So in 2019, 45% of all US flights were flown on 50-seat or smaller aircraft. And this year it's going to be 10%. So significant reduction in the smaller aircraft. And that has to do with economies of scale. You know, in larger aircraft, you still have two pilots. You don't gain any extra pilots. You do gain a couple of extra flight attendants, but you get a lot more revenue potential with a lot more seats on larger aircraft. So that's where they're taking their money, taking their resources. Interestingly, 95% of Wyoming's non-Jackson flights are operated by 50-seat aircraft. So of all the, of eight of the nine commercial service airports, 95% of our flights are operated by 50-seat or less. That 5% is only because occasionally throughout the year, United will bring a larger aircraft into Casper. But everybody else is operating on a 50-seat regional jet. Since 2019, there's been 76 station exits by legacy carriers. So that's American, Delta, United. And I'm missing one. There's four legacy carriers, but 76 station exits. What's interesting is thanks to our two programs in Wyoming that the Wyoming Legislature created, one back in 2004 with Senator Hank Coe, and then another one in 2018 under the direction of multiple people and including folks out of Campbell County and Sweetwater County. Those two programs allowed Wyoming communities to keep their air service. We may saw a diminished amount of air service, but we were able to keep our air service while communities larger than us around the country lost it. So those two programs are absolutely instrumental in keeping our state connected to the global economy, keeping our industries and businesses connected to the global economy. You all know it right here in our backyard. We have multinational global organizations running our largest industry. They need to be able to connect to the global economy and air service provides that. So it's absolutely important that our state continues to find ways to support that, as do hopefully our local elected officials through the contract for services we have with SkyWest Airlines. Some details about ARC market, advanced bookings continue to grow. This report or this chart is as of yesterday. It's basically when are people booking? And so you have the booking curve, which we refer to in our industry of as you get closer into travel, the more people reserve. But you can see very strong and steady advanced bookings there for all the way out into September, which is really, really strong. We just wrapped up. May was our second best May ever. Really since September of last year, we've either, every month's either been our second or third best month for each of those months, all the way back to September. And when we look at which is number one and number two in those cases, it's when we had three, or I'm sorry, we had two airlines, two and five daily flights. And so we had 50% more capacity. And so there's not really a way to beat those top numbers with the amount of capacity we have today. So the schedule looks very strong since the beginning of September. The airline put us on the, what I would say the optimal schedule for service into Denver to capture the most connectivity. This summer, that connection is to 155 destinations around the world. So you can fly to or from with a single stop to 155 destinations. And that number balloons over 250 with two stops, primarily if you can fly to Turkey and get into Istanbul and connect through Istanbul, which you can do. You can fly from here to Denver, get on Turkish Airlines, which is code share with United, fly to Istanbul and then connect to a bunch of European and Asian destinations with that second connection. So that's all possible right out of Rock Springs. The high costs have stabilized while the costs are up since 2019. The labor, the parts, the fuel, all those costs have stabilized. So we're not foreseeing any extravagant inflationary pressures moving forward. But as we all know, once you increase labor costs, they generally don't go down unless in the airline industry, there's large bankruptcy situations that get negotiated labor deals, which don't always happen. But the reality is that's the only way you get any kind of relief from high labor costs. Our average fares are increasing and I know the public may cringe at that thought. But the reality is with our contract for services with SkyWest Airlines, the state's contract with services with SkyWest Airlines that we partner with them on, we get credit for the revenue. Unlike the subsidy system that exists at the federal government with the central air service program, our contract for services isn't a subsidy. It is a risk mitigation tool and we get credit for all the revenue generated from that service. So it's important that those fares find the right price so that we're maximizing revenue, but we don't want to do it to the risk of emptying seats either. So trying to find that right balance. So we are going to see over the course of the summer, because our loads are so high, it's a supply and demand situation. Those fares are going to be increasing. And then our SkyWest agreement stability, I'll be back before you guys at some point this month, probably your next meeting with the new MOU or MOU amendment from the state for the SkyWest agreement. You all already have the financial info for that agreement. Those terms are locked in at this point. They're just waiting for the AG's office to finish the paperwork. And then I'll work with your attorney, Mr. DeLeone, on the MOU that exists between the county and the two cities to update it accordingly. So I'll be in touch and probably by tomorrow to discuss that. Here's our passenger employment booking. So I kind of cleaned it up a little bit to really give you relevant data. So the really big dip is just to give you some context is what happened in 2020. The red line is what happened in 2024. The solid red line was 2024. The solid maroon line was 2019. And then the solid green line was 2012, which was our high watermark in 2012 when we had five daily flights on two airlines. The orange dashed is this year. So you can see that red line grew last year considerably. And then you can see that orange line is either, once like I said earlier, either the second or the third highest line, depending on which month we look at. So we're about maximizing what we can with what we have. So now it's a matter of right sizing the fares to match the demand. 23 straight months of year-over-year growth. And then our employment numbers this year through May are up 50.2%, 50.2% compared to the same months last year. And I mentioned earlier, the two air service programs that the state of Wyoming has, that the legislature created. And I wanted to brief you just briefly on these two because there's going to be a lot of discussion about these over the next several months. The first one is the Air Service Enhancement Program, or otherwise known as ASAP. This was created in 2004. It was at the time and still today is the most, one of the most innovative air service development programs in the country. There are states today, 21 years later, still trying to figure out how to copy it and put something in place in their, in their states. This is a single market contract for services. So we used to be part of this program. When I would come to you, the county would have a contract with SkyWest directly. And then there would be the MOU between the county and the two cities. And then there'd be a grant funding that would come from the state. So this is a grant-funded program. There is currently 1.3 million dollars appropriated annually by the legislature. It was initially funded for both critical and gross service. Critical service is defined by statute as two or three daily flights to a single destination. And then gross service is anything above and beyond that. It's now primarily focused on gross service for communities that already have their critical service and are out there trying to get additional air service. It is a grant program to allow them to be able to try to go find that additional service. Here in a little bit, we'll talk about what we're doing to potentially take advantage of that program in the future. Since 2004, it's provided funding to all commercial service communities, so all nine commercial service communities in the state. In 2018, as a result of the Endow Initiative, business and industry went to the governor, went to the legislature and said, air service is number one priority for us. If you go pull up the Endow report, which you can still do online, air service was the number one priority for them. I know that would likely be a little bit different today with workforce and housing and things. But back in 2018, air service was number one. So the legislature as part of their Endow Initiative created this Air Service Improvement Council, which I was appointed to serve on by the governor, Governor Mead at the time. And we created a whole new program called the Capacity Purchase Agreement, which is what we're part of today. And that is where the state contracts with the airline for services for at right now, four communities. It will be five starting July 1st because we're going to loop Cheyenne into that program. They were part of the ASAP program leading up to this. The funding for this was a $15 million initial appropriation. And the goal was that it was going to last 10 years. That was the goal. That was a plan based on the economics in 2018. As I just talked about, the economics of air service, they've shifted. They've changed drastically, as has everything that we deal with. And so we've come to the point where this program is no longer going to have funding by mid-June of 2026. So we're looking forward to working with the governor's office and the legislature and all the key stakeholders around the state to ensure that this program stays alive. Because without it, air service in Sheridan, Riverton, Rock Springs or Sweetwater County, Gillette and Cheyenne is likely to go away without it. So it's absolutely imperative that this program is continued going forward. And it's part of the reason I was at the county commissioners meeting not too long ago was to just share this information. Very similar presentation I shared with the committee I spoke with up there. Just trying to get the word out there that this program is going to be absolutely a critical conversation for at least us during the upcoming budget session. So with that, a couple of quick updates and then I'll be done. Other items of note, our flight school that started in December at the, at the airport, we didn't start, to be clear. It's Western Wyoming Aviation. It's a private enterprise. They continue to see growth. They're flying nearly every day at the airport. They have, I think at last I heard over 30 students. And they're continuing to see that growth climb. They're looking at adding additional aircraft and expanding their operation at the airport. So that's great news. aircraft and expanding their operation at the airport. So that's great news. We are continuing our efforts in working with our carbon sequestration and capture developer, and looking at ways to create revenue sources for the airport through those relationships. We are actively meeting with additional airlines to talk about additional air carriers and destinations for the airport. We've started those meetings back at the beginning of April, and we're continuing to have those dialogues. It's a lot like economic development, so it's not just call up an airline, say, hey, we want you to start service. The only way that works is if you write them a big check, and it gives them a reason to pull their resources from somewhere else. So it's like economic development, where we need to work on them, help them understand the opportunity that exists in our community, and hopefully find the time that that opportunity aligns with their business plan and their resource availability. So we're, we were able to do that before the airline terminal, the new airport terminal. But now that we know when that airport terminal is going to be operational, we're able to have those conversations, and they've been fruitful so far, and we'll continue to push for that. We'll be doing our updated capital improvement plan in August. We do it during the summer every year. The FA requires us to do that. It'll largely be in line with our master plan. The difference is, well, we have some impacts from the terminal situation that will modify a few things, as well as the procurement of our ARF truck, which I'll talk about next, or on the next slide. That helps us push that acquisition out a few years as well. So a new capital plan will be coming. It'll, I call it a revised, maybe not new, it'll be revised. We're also working on future hangar development planning. We have approximately $2.7 million of IGA funds that we have to use at the airport, or we lose it. And so we're looking to put that money towards revenue generating facilities. Normally, we can't use federal funds on revenue generating facilities, but in this instance, we are allowed to. So we're looking at the most strategic way to spend that money to generate revenue for the airport, to once again, reduce our dependency on the local taxpayers. And then along those lines, we're also looking at some next-gen revenue opportunities. I call it next-gen. It's nothing new. Just looking at what areas of the airport are we not capturing revenue from, and how do we generate revenue from them? We've already captured all the low-hanging fruit. So why I call it next-gen for us is it's, it's kind of going deeper and looking at the harder things to accomplish. And so that's what we're focused on going forward here as well. And then I heard during the commissioner update, Commissioner Richards mentioned this. We were given the opportunity to procure a new-to-us fire truck. So the airport, as I've mentioned before, operates our own fire department, and we have two fire trucks. One is a 2015 Rosenbauer 1500 gallon ARF truck. The other one is a 1999 Oshkosh 1500 ARF truck. The 1999 is just getting old. It's 26 years old, and it's costing more and more to maintain. The pipes are starting to corrode through. We've had to have pipes rebuilt, because you can't just go order them. They're custom. And so we've had to have local companies rebuild them. And on top of that, both of our current fire trucks have what is known as AFF in them, which is the firefighting foam that the federal government required airports to use for decades, and it is now known to be a known carcinogen that has PFAS and PFOA in it. So we're going to have to transition to new firefighting foams. To do that for our both truck, for both of our trucks, it's about $50,000 a truck. This truck that we were able to buy from Jackson Hole Airport is twice the size of our old Oshkosh. It's nine years newer, and it's already been converted to the new foam. So we were able to get this truck for $100,000, thanks to relationships in the state, get us a nine-year newer truck that is already converted to the environmentally safe foam, is what the federal government tells us. Don't fully believe it, but that's what they tell us. So we now only have one truck to convert, which right away saves us some of that money. And we get a newer truck that has readily available parts, has better firefighting capacity, 50% more, or I'm sorry, 100% more foam, 100% more water. Overall, gives us 50% more firefighting capacity at the airport. So we're excited for it. My team is up at the airport right now, started at 10 o'clock doing their training on it. So by the end of the day-to-day, our entire team will be trained on it, and within a matter of a couple of weeks, we'll put it into service. And then our old Oshkosh fire truck, we're going to put that out on the market to hopefully get it sold. So big improvement for the airport to have this capability for firefighting. And it also gives us that ability that if, if, and this isn't the reason we did it, but it's icing on the cake. If a company calls and says, hey, we want to bring in this larger aircraft, do you have the firefighting capacity for it? We will be able to say yes now, where we weren't able to say yes before. So whether that be cargo, passenger, or a maintenance repair overhaul facility, whatever it might be, we can now say yes, thanks to this truck. So. And the very last thing I'll give to you guys or share with you, you all have gotten multiple emails from me, and I apologize for that, but I'm hoping that you guys, I know you're all busy, and you're all very, or stretched very thin, but I would love to have you all be able to sign up for at least one shift for the Air Race Classic at the airport as a volunteer. June 18th through the 20th, we'll be welcoming 40 to 50 all-women race teams as they race from Alabama to Washington. It's not like the Reno Air Races, where they're going in a circle really fast, like a NASCAR race. They're racing against their own handicap time across the country. This is, like I said, the 48th year. We expect to see aircraft starting on the 18th, going all the way through the 20th. We have volunteer signups out. I will be issuing a press release tomorrow to get that out to the public. I've wanted to give our local electeds and our airport tenants the first opportunity to sign up for those spots before I put it out to the public, but those will be going out tomorrow. We need a lot of volunteers, and I have them split out, I think, into four-hour shifts. Everything from just making sure that the pilots are fed, and they have access to beverages, to driving them back and forth to town, to hotels, to actually timing them as they fly across the timing lines at the airport. This is a great opportunity to welcome these folks to our community and highlight what we all love about our community. And so would love to see you all up there. If you can't commit to volunteering, I'd love for you to just swing out and say hi during the event as well. That would be great. We don't know exactly when aircraft will arrive or not during the three days, because they're coming across the whole country, but it's going to be a great event, great opportunity to highlight our community. And with that, I think I'm done. I was pretty close to being on schedule, I think. So thank you.
You started about 10, I think.
No, I didn't. I know it's tough to, you know, as Commissioner Richards said during my board meeting, you all know me to be that annoying guy, I think is what you said about me. So hopefully I'm not annoying it too bad. Isn't that what you said?
No, we appreciate the update. It's good to see that we've turned the page on some of the difficulties over the past few years here, and can start focusing on the future and what's yet to come, and look forward to the terminal being done. I'm sure you of all people are ready to check that one off the list. But I do believe, even though it's been certainly a challenge, more so for you than any of us up here, but it's going to be a tremendous improvement for the community that I think we can all be proud of, and I think hopefully that opens up, you know, opportunity, and we'll continue to do good things for Sweetwater County. So I'm anxious to see that done. Additional comments? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Devin. Appreciate the lengthy presentation.
Five turn, 15, 20, 25 minutes.
I have to say, I'm a little envious, the slide where it showed how many people who made reservations 180 days out. I wish I could plan my life that far away. I hope someday I get to that point, but it's not today. I know we've talked a lot about the grant money, and really want to thank you and commend you for finding the grant money that would have, obviously, in light of where we are financially today, add on the airport expense, and that would have been pretty ugly. So I know you worked really hard on that, and I just can't thank you enough, because that really made a huge difference. And of course, the project, but financially. And then a final note, I do appreciate you coming to the WCCA meetings and giving a presentation. It's, it's important that we're informed and educated. Uneducated governing is terribly dangerous. So I appreciate you coming, and you know, face-to-face is always better than, than a Zoom. So it's good to be able to get together and have conversations. So thank you.
Absolutely. And we look forward to WCCA being back here in the fall, I believe. And I've already extended invitation to host your guys' annual banquet at the airport like we have the last couple of times. So hope that comes to fruition. Love to have you back.
Very good. All will be good timing. You'll be in it by then, right?
Yeah, we, we normally do it in the hangar, but I hadn't even thought about maybe doing it in the terminal. That could be an opportunity. So.
Additional comments?
Good job. I'm so glad I got the liaison duty shifted to Commissioner Richards in time for releasing the Doge funds for you. Notice it is a women's air race. I want to see all of you up there. I will be signing up to help.
Awesome. And Mr. Chairman, I would just, I think I sent an email out to you, but face-to-face, as somebody just said, is more important. A huge thank you to this group. I came before you all with one of the biggest asks that you probably will face as a county commission, financially at least, and a biggest risk potentially that you could face. And while you guys were very uncomfortable, and it was very uncomfortable for me, you guys stood up and had our back and supported, as did the city council over in Rock Springs. And I know that even today is likely still creating some challenges for you about the narrative of your reserves and such. But you guys had to protect your reserves in case things went south at the airport. And I can't say thank you enough, and the fact that you all are still potentially dealing with some of that, those ramifications today politically, my apologies. I didn't come to you lightly. It was the biggest burden in my career to have to come and ask of that. And the fact that you guys were, were willing to support the airport, and then also even to look at your guys' and your predecessors, the importance of having those reserves and what they're there for. This was a perfect example that things don't always go perfect. And the fact that you guys and your predecessors were planning accordingly makes all the difference when things don't go perfectly. And we can't be 100% efficient. We can't be 100% perfect as much as we try. So really appreciate this group's, your predecessors' willingness to be proactive in that front, and also have our backs when we needed it. So thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards. Devin, I make light, but I have to say, working with you is a privilege. You are as consummate of a professional as I've ever dealt with in government, and the things you're able to accomplish out there are phenomenal. So thank you. I appreciate that. I'm proud to be your liaison.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, 1.25 million of local share out of a $43 million project. And yeah, it was uncomfortable, but you know, we have been forward-thinking, and we've had some differing opinions there, but we were, we were there, and we had the capacity if needed. So again, job well done on not having to go there. So made our lives a lot easier. But we appreciate the presentation. Thanks for coming over, and we'll look forward to the grand opening.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Commissioners, that's going to conclude the regular business on the agenda today. We do have a budget workshop slated for 11:00 AM. We're going to take a quick break and bump that back just a bit. So we're going to resume at 11:10. And with no further business to come before us on the regular meeting, this meeting stands adjourned. And with no further business to come before us on the regular meeting, this meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you. We will go ahead and call this budget workshop to order June 3, 2025. Joining us again is Accounting Specialist Rebecca Merrill. Pick up where we left off and hopefully find a way to balance. So I'll hand it over to you at this time, Rebecca.
Okay, so yes, at the last meeting, we had stopped at the agencies and we were moving on to the component units. So I received the spreadsheet this morning with what could possibly be done along with all of the other changes. And I have the same amounts that you do. I kind of just like hurried and put that in the clear gov. And I think we have like a $32,000 difference, which is probably carryover or there was a change to payroll made early this morning. So so that's where we're at.
I guess I'll start with that. We, we left off after the last budget workshop. I think we were around 2.1 million.
Yes, 2.161, yes.
Short at that time. So since then, I sent you all a spreadsheet. I've just been trying to figure out a way to get us balanced and you know, obviously capital is the biggest area where we can cut, but also we know we're behind in that regard. So I was trying to, I guess, help us get caught up on county core especially. So I looked into other areas where we could find some savings or cuts. I looked into some of the component units, operating budgets and made some recommendations there. Some of them are have had already reduced their requests compared to a year ago. Some of them had some increases. So I don't know, I was just kind of trying to find a happy medium, if that's even possible. I did speak with Gene in regards to some of the capital. There is one project on there. The I think it was encumbered from last year, the Farson Road and Bridge parking lot that he said we could get by. So that's another $120,000 savings there. And then I was just looking at different areas. You know, there's different philosophies on the carryover and the reserve accounts and we have some of that unrestricted industrial siting or impact assistance funding. But anyway, it's, it's a starting point, conversation starter. And I just thought we could have some conversations on which avenues you all think might be best, but I was kind of running out of areas to look. You know, we spent quite a bit of time on outside agencies last time. And at the end of all those difficult conversations and cuts, it was about a $350,000 savings. So that wasn't going to get us there. And unfortunately, a lot of those cuts were huge to some of those organizations. So I'd open it up for any discussion or feedback or thoughts. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to office.
Mr. Chairman, I will start, I guess. You know, having spoken as much as I did during our last meeting, I appreciate the work that you have done in, in coming up with the additional cuts, which you've done and the ideas that you've had behind that. It's amazing. The work that I had done after the fact and what I had done previously is very similar to what you did. So I think we're thinking pretty much along the same lines there. I, I think I had a couple percentages slightly different with respect to what I would have done with our component units, but the way you've broken it up, it's very similar to what my, my thoughts would be. The one thing that we've talked a little bit about that is not addressed here is the potential for using some of the opioid settlement funding to offset some of the funding which we've got for Southwest Counseling. In discussions that we've had with the attorney's office and the conversations that you and I had with, with Christina with respect to that, I think it would be something that we could look at potentially using 250 or $300,000 of that opioid settlement funding and offsetting some of our requests with that. So other than that, I have no problem with what you've done. I like it. It looks really good to me.
Yeah. And so on these, I believe it does include back and out treatment court, treatment court head flat from a year ago, which was 9,000, but actually it was 8,000.
Yeah.
So that's out of there, but the Southwest was still kind of up in the air. I mean, obviously you and I met with Casino and some options there, but I'm sure, and I don't know, I think Commissioner Richards, you may have had a meeting on that too.
We, we did, but there's a struggle on how to allocate that, that money because of, of how it's billed. So I, I think they agreed to try to target 250 to $300,000. But, but there is some question on how they get to those, those numbers without interfering with their other billing streams.
And my thinking on that is that throughout the course of this year, with what we're doing, we're, we're going to come up with a mechanism that we'd be able to use that funding. And that seems to be the consensus from the attorney's office and, and from Casino on it also.
Also on the board of health, they have $64,000 of cash on hand. And so their request actually was reduced to 515, 355.
Mr. Chairman, one other item. In what you have done here, I'm not sure. Dave Mead, the director of the County Museum is here. As liaison, I have been working with them for the last couple of months and trying to come up with what their request would be for this year. And just so that Dave is aware with what the chair has brought forth here in, in with respect to the museum, the request that you made this year would be 379,245.96. The chair in his budget version that he's given us has decreased that to $350,000. And I think it would probably be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, at some point during the Mead to address what took place with respect to the, the dialogue that that board had and how they came to the $379,000 for this year. Once again, not advocating for anything with respect to this, just trying to create dialogue with respect to this and to help the museum have their opportunity to, to make their case with respect to their request for this year.
Yeah, I think a lot of that was, I believe it was a flat request from the year previous. Last year, we reduced your amount to get you down to the roughly 120 days cash on hand. So this request was just going back to the fiscal year 24 request, I guess it would be, if I understand that right. Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, while we're going through the list here, I just wanted to kind of clarify a little bit about the reduction in the hospital. I had had a conversation with Irene and, and we discussed being down 20% instead of your original 7.39. The hospital can do that. I just want to caution all of the commissioners that that money goes to primarily goes to maintaining our building. So you know, the question is always asked, well, can they deal with less? Well, yes, of course they can. They could just do less maintenance, but it's something that can be handled here and there, but certainly not something that ought to be considered as a long-term option. That's just going to put us in the situation. We've seen a, a city about 15 miles away from us that's in from lack of maintenance on some things. So just a caution there that can they do with less? Yes. Is that a long-term plan? That would be incredibly short sighted and, and put us in a downward spiral on the condition of the facility. So but I was, I was content with the 20% and after talking with Irene, she's, she's good with it as well. So and we've done that before up there. When I was on the board several years, in fact, one year, the commission came to us three different times and asked us three times in one year to reduce our ask. So hospitals always willing to work with us and, and you know, get through a rough period or a short period, just, just can't be a long-term plan. That's all.
Yeah, that's certainly appreciated. That's a big chunk. So any other feedback or thoughts? I, with some of those cuts, trying to make county or capital, county core projects more of a priority. We had cut, I can't remember the last 10 or so, I think, capital projects. So I added back in. I think it was the next five that were on our capital ranking list projects in order, which added some money back in, which some of those savings would, I guess, make up the difference on. So again, just trying to be somewhat reasonable and realistic. And you know, all of the component units did take a cut. Some of them offered a little bit more than that. So, you know, we tried to, I guess I tried to be a little reasonable in that regard, but I don't know that there's a right answer. You try and do the best you can to get there. But I, I do want to make it a point that, you know, we're using 100% of our carryover. A large majority of that is capital projects that haven't been completed yet that are going to be in this coming year. As well as, you know, reclassifying the, the hospital lab, taking that out of operations and putting it back out of our reserves. And then obviously all pretty much all of the remaining amount of that goes towards capital. So in a way, in my opinion, that's, that is usually utilizing reserves to get us there, but I feel a little bit better about it being one-time projects as far as capital goes. So.
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment. You and I, after the conversation that we had with the opioids the other day, I mentioned something that I think has created some confusion for us over the last couple of years. And, and I made a suggestion at that time. I'm not sure what the rest of the board would think about it. But we have referred to the funding that we received from ARPA PILT as ARPA PILT reserves for the last three or four years. I would like to see us classify that as just general reserves rather than having it listed as ARPA PILT for future reference. I've talked with Christina. Obviously we will still have to have the same record keeping and things of that nature when we choose to use that funding. And we will use it for those specific purposes, which we would. But I think if we continue referring to it as ARPA PILT, it just creates some confusion.
Yeah, I agree with that. And it's unrestricted as well, right? So I mean, as far as timelines or anything like that. I'm good with that if everyone else is. I needed some feedback on the library. The increase the library had this year was strictly the health insurance and a cost of living adjustment. You know, and going through their operations and making pretty much cuts to all of them. I think I had them at two and a half percent or so. But I guess I'd lean on the liaisons a little bit to see if, I mean, that's one of our, it is our biggest budget as far as a component unit goes at three and a half million. So I didn't want to cut them too deep, but also we've got some others that are taking a 20% cut and 8%, 10%. So I didn't know if there was any wiggle room there with the library or not.
I'll check with her on the way back today. Could I make a comment on the ARPA PILT? I think if nothing else, it's important, maybe, I don't care if you put it with general, but I think it's important, especially like Marlene Brady's here today. To understand the importance, this is what our trips to Washington and, and what that commissioner has committed to go to all those meetings of NACO all these years. Payment in lieu of taxes is not an automatic renewal by the Congress. Every year you fight for that. And with accounting the 70% public lands, if we don't fight to get some kind of payment in lieu of taxes, it'll go away. And I, I just can't stress enough. And for that reason, I don't have a problem with leaving it there so they can see. We got almost a double payment PILT two years ago. So because of the bill back better and all that other funding, we got two PILT payments in one year of three point, around 3.5 million. But if we hadn't been fighting and, and sending people to fight for it, we would not have gotten that. And it's only the Western states that have the federal lands in a large percentage. So if those of us in the Western states who maybe don't have the biggest budgets, don't go to DC to fight for this, we will not have it. So I, I just wanted to make that point.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter?
Just for additional information with respect, I, I completely agree with Commissioner Tolman with respect to this. The difference here is this was part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And that was the additional funding that came through. So it was different than our regular PILT payment. So, you know, it was different than our regular PILT payment in that in that respect. But you are correct. You know, it's something that we fought for many, many years to try and get them to put back, for years it was put in. It it had been a guaranteed payment. But the last several years, we've had to fight to do this each year. And it is very important. But I think it does add some confusion when we talk about it. Because in with respect to the original ARPA funding that we received, there were restrictions on how it could be used and timeframes with respect to how it could be used. And those do not apply with respect to this. And that's the reason I I think if we if we look at it as just a part of our general reserves, it's a little bit easier to to comprehend.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. But I just have to tell you that elected officials pushed really hard to get the ARPA PILT. It wasn't just an automatic, they're going to give it to you. We fought hard to get that ARPA PILT in addition to our regular PILT.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
Just your question about the library. I believe we have three main branch library, three main libraries, six branch libraries. Lindsay, kill me, but I I think there's room there for the library board to make some improvements. And you don't make improvements until you have to. And right now is a year where we have to, we have to make some cuts. I I think we should probably make some cuts there. I don't think that they'll be devastating because I think the library does have some options to create some revenue with the facilities that we we provide them. And and this might be the the stimulus they need to to start doing that. So I I think I'd probably support some deeper cuts to the library.
And the figures on this spreadsheet are accounting for a twenty percent cut to the library rather than the two point four.
There's a couple of different versions there. The first one was utilizing some funds to help balance coming out of our capital reserve amount. And the second one was keeping that whole. So I didn't know on the library, just because I haven't been involved with a lot of their operation, if they could withstand a bigger cut just because they are one of the bigger budget items. But a twenty percent is about seven hundred thousand dollars, so that's a pretty big swing.
That is, that might be too deep. I don't know what the right answer is. But like I said, I think I think they can make up some revenue. You know, we we provide them with a lot of facilities. And I don't know if the the grants that remodeled those meeting rooms allow it. But I I I think that our other component units that have rentable rooms, rent out those rooms. And I think it might be at least worth a discussion to see if the library should be renting out some of their facilities instead of providing them free. I I think that's something that they could look into.
And I I defer to Commissioner Slaughter as he was their liaison for what, two years? And I I'm just new at it, so I don't have my head wrapped around all of their.
Not quite as gray as Commissioner Slaughter, but I
You're getting there.
All all cuts have a cost. And and in the library's case, it would probably be in staffing to go that deep. But again, I think there's some opportunity to create some revenue there. I also think that they might be a little heavy on facilities. To me, it doesn't make sense that we have a branch library in Reliance. As important as Reliance is to Sweetwater County, it is also just a mere couple of miles from a city where we provide two main branch libraries. I don't know what we could save, what they could save by maybe offloading the Reliance facility. But it's used a couple of times a week, but the utilities are paid all week. So I think I think there's opportunities for savings there.
So if we don't go that deep on the library, then we have to find a way to make it up someplace else, I guess. I would agree with Commissioner Richards that the possibility they I don't know, in a in an opinion, have too many facilities, I guess. Everybody's going to have their own opinion on that. So some people will completely disagree, but probably difficult to get everybody to agree on what's the the correct number of facilities. But I agree, having having a branch that close to two main ones is could be a little bit overkill.
And I believe I just got a message from Lindsay that says the grants say we can't charge for the spaces. So that covers the three main libraries.
So with cutting the library, the twenty percent, we would be in a surplus of two hundred and ninety two thousand. Just to kind of give you an idea of where it's at.
So, Mr. Chairman, I I too agree that there are some areas that the library might be able to cut. But I think twenty percent might be too deep. You know, I in my numbers, I had seven and a half percent. But I think with the discussions we've got here now, ten percent would be three hundred and fifty three thousand dollars roughly. I think that's a little closer maybe to where I would I would lean with respect to the further conversation that we've had.
Let me see here, that's what I was running the numbers on.
And with that, the library would have the ability to choose where they would make cuts if they had to.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can support that, but I really like to hear from Commissioner Tolman on that. If she's had any discussions with him?
I haven't, so I would like to follow up with that. She hasn't sent me a note, but she did send you one, Lindsay did.
I think it was, just came through as a number, but I'm assuming it's Lindsay.
I didn't get anything.
So if we did ten percent for the library, it would take us in a shortfall of about ninety four thousand.
That's what I was trying to get to.
You were faster than Rebecca in the last meeting, no?
She's on it, struggling, I got numbers everywhere. And I don't know, I my theory on that, I just felt like we were dipping into too many of our reserves. I mean, in one argument, you can say that that's what some of that impact assistance money is for. Obviously, we've set money aside on the capital reserve. But again, we're using carryover. So my thought was just to use carryover and the impact assistance and find a way to budget or balance accordingly with that without dipping into the capital reserve, just because we've seen some of the capital projects that we currently have going on. You know, have some price increase, so. But that gets us close, what'd you say, ninety four thousand?
About ninety four thousand, yes. That's like ninety three, six, forty seven.
Any thoughts?
So is that all of the the one point three, is that all of the impact assistance that we could use towards the budget? Or this is just?
Yeah, so I checked with Christina, and that's the total amount that's unrestricted. There's more in there, but it's for specific uses. But there is, that is the full amount that's available, I guess.
We still also have the three point five. I know you don't want to use reserves, but we still have the three point five for the ARPA.
So I would take it, Mr. Chairman, that it is not the consensus of the board that we would want to use a portion of the opioid funds with respect to this. Once again, I think that that's still an option here.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a goal. I think we're a little bit behind in that regard of not exactly having a plan in place yet for it. I mean, I guess we can always do a budget amendment when we get there. But the goal of especially specifically Southwest Counseling, that was in their agreement with us this year, to make a plan for that, and obviously that hasn't happened.
Where is the opioid on here? Where is it shown? Is it shown under general or where is it?
It's a separate account. It's a separate fund.
It's not listed on on any of our income anywhere?
No, and there's, I I believe there was a million, about a million five currently in that fund.
I do have it, though. It's
Because of yesterday, it was like one point three six million. Mr. Chairman, I I just got a message from the library, and they said ten percent would cause layoffs of six part time staff and hour reductions for many.
That was for the ten percent, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It should, this brings to light, there's no good choices here. Every dollar we cut affects somebody somewhere. Going back to hearing that it's just two percent, but it's not just two percent. It's a very large portion of somebody's budget that provides necessary services to the people of Sweetwater County. Chairman, we could go back through outside agencies and recover a little bit more money if we needed it to cover some of our still continuing shortfalls.
Mr. Chairman, personally, I think that's where we need to go. Started out saying that we obviously have to start with what we're required to fund and our core county and would trickle on down the line, which as I said in our last meeting, is a hard pill to swallow. That's negatively impacting our seniors, the folks who've paid taxes in Sweetwater County for decades. And it's negatively impacting our youth who haven't had an opportunity to pay taxes in Sweetwater County yet. But I don't see where we have any other choice than to head to those outside agencies.
Mr. Chairman, I would disagree. I believe we do have another choice. You know, I I made my statement with respect to our outside agencies at our last meeting. I still believe that we have a moral obligation to fund some of those. I think that we could use additional portions of our reserves to fund the deficit that we're at right now. I don't think that it's ridiculous to use additional reserve funding to fund the balance. I think we've done an excellent job of preparing for exactly the situation that we are in with the decrease of all of our revenue. I think our reserves are sustainable. And I I think that we could look at, rather than cutting those agencies deeper, using reserve funding to to fund the the balance of our deficit.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that. We we spend a lot of time on the outside agencies for a little bit of money, which affects a lot of people. I I just don't want to see us go any more in that direction. And for the Conservation District to take a forty percent hit, when that's the only thing that's dealing with natural resources, that still really upsets me. And I think if we have the ARPA PILT, that, you know, that could help cover some of those. We we do have some money there that we could use. And the opioid money could be used for Southwest Counseling. I think we need to balance the budget and not spend another hour going to the least ones who are getting the least amount of money who affect the most amount of people. That that's my opinion about it.
Mr. Chairman, while that sounds good, we may have only saved three hundred and sixty, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars lowering funding to outside agencies. That is half of this twenty percent that we just looked at for the library, that we were able to get down to ten percent because we still had that three hundred and some odd thousand dollars in our budget to spend. And that's six jobs that are indirectly employed by the county. I I know we have, always have a moral obligation to provide services, but I don't think we have a moral obligation to continue to provide services through unrelated outside agencies. That was a choice the county, previous county commissions made when there was a lot of money in the budget to to disperse that money into the community through those agencies. But we don't have a lot of money in the budget anymore. We take, we have significantly less money in the budget anymore. And I don't think we're doing those agencies a service by stringing them along for an extra year. Now, if we don't want to go back into them and cut a little more, a bit more, so we can keep the library whole, fine. But that's the choice we're making. We're going to continue to fund outside agencies. Now, don't get me wrong, I, there's a lot of outside agencies and and some of them are more important among equals. I think we need to fund our senior centers at least until we can find a a replacement revenue stream for them. But some of those outside agencies are just simply not our responsibility and not the taxpayers' responsibility to continue to fund.
Well, I think we did wax them on, we eliminated some.
No, we did not eliminate any, not a single one.
I thought we did, the boys and girls.
I was outvoted. We did not eliminate a single.
We have severely cut them, obviously, you know. And once again, we we can talk about cutting six positions at the library, or we can look at using funding from our reserves. And and we can have a reluctance to do that, or we can choose to do it. And and you're right, a hundred percent with respect to the fact that every dollar that we cut affects people out there. And I believe that we we, along with commissions prior to us, tried to prepare. And that's that's the entire reason for having reserves is when you have Tried to prepare, and that's, that's the entire reason for having reserves is when you have. A interruption of your revenue to be able to fund operations. And I still believe that while we may not have a legal obligation. Under statute to fund those human service agencies, that we are doing a service. By not cutting them completely from this year's budget. And I do think that we have the capacity to do it within our reserves. And, and still maintain those six positions at the library if you chose to do that. So it's another option.
Okay, so that's all over the place. I struggle because I, I really hate using reserves. I feel like we're already using reserves and. The whole point is we've got a down year, obviously. Majority of that is mineral valuation and. We're gonna have to be tough. I mean, we're cutting our own to support others. And I remain with the fact that county corps should always be at the top, and I think we've done a pretty good job at that. When you look at the overall cuts that we've made, you know, obviously we have the biggest operation, but we've already cut. Two and a half million dollars out of our capital. More or less no changes to operating and some increase in obviously a cost of living and health insurance, so. I don't know what the answer is, but I, I, I'm really hesitant to continue to support. Organizations operating budgets on the backs of the county taxpayers' reserves and. That's why I was trying to look into, I mean, we can cut more capital if you want to go that route, if that's easier, you know, but ultimately, as we know. And it comes back to be our problem. Even further, so I. It's tough, but we gotta get there and I'm not a, a big proponent of. Using our reserves to get there.
Um, if we did the library five percent, we would be at a two hundred and seventy thousand dollars shortfall.
And is that with adding back in those county core capital projects?
Yes.
Which that came to. About that, so that was two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Yes.
So I believe I've got Rob and Mary in agreement on utilizing reserves to get us there, additional reserves. I'm not sure, Island, what were you saying? Go back to.
Well, I, I think we could still, I think there's. I think if we zeroed out the four organizations that I recommended. Previously, that's seventy. Eighty-five thousand dollars. It's not huge, but.
Rebecca, what did you say on, um, Board of Health? That there's. Was five fifteen, is that what you?
Yeah, their request is actually at five fifteen, three fifty-five. So they requested the five seventy-nine, but they still have sixty-four thousand dollars on cash on hand, so we reduced it by the five, to the five fifteen.
Okay, so though that's factored into what you've been.
Yes.
Your shortfall.
Yes.
It was not five twenty-five, it's five fifteen?
Yes, it's five fifteen, three fifty-five.
Mr. Chairman. I, I think it's probably. Time to start having the discussion about some of these boards and. The, the primacy that we've, we've claimed and some of these services are in reality the state's job to provide. And I, and I think we need to start looking at those and turn some of those functions back over to the state.
Mr. Chairman, along those lines, um, Commissioner Richards, I have been in touch with, uh, Mr. McLean. To try and start to gather some information. And just see exactly where that stands, but it's going to be a lengthy process, so I don't think we're gonna. Solve anything here today or in this budget, but certainly it's. Something that I agree we need to look at, but it's just not a, a today topic. That can be resolved, I mean.
Chairman, I'd, I'd agree, we're not gonna. Eliminate some of the positions in the, that the Board of Health provides through our funding today. But we can put it on our radar. And, and I think that would make me feel better about using at least a little bit of reserve funding. Knowing that we're not going, we're not dedicating that forever if, if we're looking for a way to eliminate that expense in the future.
I think it's important to take into account too, that with. The talks that we're having and trying to come up with a method for using the funding from the opioids. That in next year's budget, hopefully there will be some latitude there. That will offset some of what we're doing here too. So, once again, just. I, I believe that those funds need to be awarded to be able to help in the areas that they are intended. Um, we are going to find some ways to do that in next year's budget, I'm sure. So that will help, that will assist us a little bit in next year's budget.
So, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Richards, in your liaison times with Southwest Counseling. If we were to use some opioid funding to get to zero. Do you think in the next budget that they will have something concrete for good use? Or are we just throwing money out in hopes? Cause I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I just don't want to throw money at it so we get to zero and then. Really didn't make any progress other than we got to zero.
I don't think we're ever gonna like. Pull them completely off of our general budget and replace it with opioid funding. Uh, but like, like I said, they, they thought maybe they could. Identify two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand a year. It's, it's hard because most of the services they provide are tied directly to. The service itself and they get funded for that service. Um, so finding the gaps where our money is filling in is, is accounting. And, and they are actively looking at that. I, I can't say what that final number will look like though.
I, I think in discussions that we've had also, there are some other areas other than Southwest Counseling. That we are going to be able to identify areas where we can use opioid funding in the future also. So I think, you know, there, that, that's not, we're not limited strictly to Southwest Counseling with respect to that. I believe as we get into the needs assessment, we're talking about doing this, we will identify some other areas where it's appropriate to use that funding also. So I think that, eh, I, ultimately, I hope in the fiscal twenty-seven budget, as I say. You know, that if, if we hold people's feet to the fire and looking at areas to use that, I think that we'll come up with some funding. That, or some areas where that funding is appropriate.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, Lindsay just forwarded. A document to everybody with what five, ten and twenty percent cuts look like to their organization.
Rebecca, fresh, refresh my memory. I'm close. You said around two seventy. I, I meant two sixty, but that could be just our difference from earlier that. There were some additional carryover or something that.
Um, yeah, we had a change in payroll, um, right before this started. So, yeah, you and I were off around thirty thousand, so.
Okay. What's your shortfall showing with those changes?
Uh, two seventy, three eighty-four, eighty-one.
And that's with the library, it's five percent, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm reading this correctly from Lindsay. It would be not getting rid of a position. It would be not filling one full-time position two at the five percent level. Is that how you would read that?
Yeah, that's what it appears to me. So I guess that's the big question. How do we get to the two seventy? I mean, we can. Use reserves, we can cut deeper, or we can basically coal or pull capital projects.
Well, Mr. Chairman, because I like to talk, I guess. In, in looking at the question of whether to use reserves or whether to use. The method of cutting capital. I see them really as being one and the same. The, the capital, if, if we cut it, we're deferring it. And we're going to end up using reserves probably in the future. It's going to cost more at that point in time, so. I'm not sure that there's a huge difference in my mind, one way or the other, with respect to that. You know, and, and I. I, I've been party to all of the conversations we've had with. Public Works Director Legursky on our deferred maintenance and it scares me on the capital that we've got coming up, but. I, I'm also hopeful that we will get rid of some of our buildings and some of that will go away. But a- as far as our conversations today, I don't really see that there's a huge difference between cutting. Ca- some more of the capital or funding it with reserves. And that's just the way my mind rationalizes it.
Chairman, I, I think I agree. I'm, I'm not as adverse to you as cutting a little bit into our reserves. It's why we put them there. Problem is, is if we have to do that year after year, we have to do it again next year, then. Then we know we have a bigger problem. If we have to do it the year after that, then we know we have a real, real problem and then we're gonna have to start digging into core. I think to avoid digging into core and, and being, being. Carrying too hard of a, too big of a hammer against our components, I'm. I'm okay with dipping a little bit into reserves. We, we've been really frugal. We've put some money aside. And I, I think it's a good time to use a little bit of it, and we're not talking millions this time. We're, we're talking a, a small percentage of our budget if, if we use reserves to, to cover the shortfalls we've identified. I'd still, I'd still feel better if we eliminated. A couple more of these outside entities from our, from our books. Uh, especially if we're digging into reserves and still cutting components. But I'm, I'm okay either way.
With, with respect to that, I, I would feel comfortable in moving forward with the premise. That we are cutting the funding to those entities and letting them know that next year we would not anticipate funding them, so. Uh, the, at this point in time, you know, we have taken a hard stance. But, but we're trying to mitigate some of that with some funding for this year, but to not plan on it at all for next year.
Anyone else?
So if you take the library five percent, is that what the number we're looking at to give us the two seventy-four shortfall? Well, I think it should come out of that ARPA PILT. I don't care if you throw it in the general or where, because that was not derived from our. Our reserves. It was something that came extra last year. So I don't have a problem with dipping into some of that.
So Commissioner Richards, which of the outside agencies are you thinking, refresh my memory, that we would take to zero?
My original recommendation was Boys and Girls Club, Clime, Wyoming, Family Resource Center and VIRS taken to zero. Again, we, we cut Clime, Wyoming from three thousand to fifteen hundred and. And again, I, I think our funding there has always been just a token, token fund, and if they need. Some public money to, to leverage a grant or something like that specifically. I'm, I'm open to readdressing that, but as just a direct distribution, I, I recommend we just. Get rid of that. And I, and I feel the same way for most of the rest. I, I'm, I just not comfortable. Directly funding a lot of these groups with, with money without any real agreement with how they're gonna spend it. I, some of these groups provide great services, but they're also services that are provided in competition with. Other nonprofits and or for-profit organizations that don't receive funding from the county, so I just. I don't know why we continue to, to, to carry them.
I do have a question, Rebecca, though. When you get the budget requests in from those entities, they used to attach their full agenda, itemized agendas. Do they not attach that anymore? I mean, their budget, itemized budget.
Um, they have their income statement on there.
But they don't, they haven't been providing you their actual budget?
No.
Oh, okay, cause we used.
You talking to budget request forms?
Budget request, yeah.
Yeah, they're in there. As far as what they, they're asked.
They're asked, but it's not the itemized actual budget.
Itemized, no. Okay, they usually kind of give like where they're going to spend it and what they do for the community.
Yeah, okay.
As far as year-to-date numbers, Rebecca, I mean, are we pretty close as far as projection goes? I mean, obviously we still have this month.
So payroll is completed for this month. They're working on payroll liabilities today. As soon as. Probably today or tomorrow, we'll have the final figures on payroll. Um, operating, I can do an estimate and then I can also do an estimate for capital. So those will be changing, but payroll will be. Unless there's a term check that they need to do, that should be pretty close.
So, Mr. Chairman, to move this along a little bit, I will make a motion. That we use. Rebecca, the number you have is two hundred and seventy-six thousand. And what is the exact number?
Uh, two seventy-three eighty-four.
Two seventy-three eighty-four. From reserves to balance our budget for fiscal year twenty-six.
I'm gonna back you up. I don't think we can take action in a workshop.
Oh.
But we can at least get a consensus.
I would, okay, I would ask for consensus then on that, because otherwise I think we're gonna sit here for a long time.
Which reserve, Rob? I mean, I, I guess it doesn't really matter, but we've got.
You know, they're, they're all the same, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we're, you know, we, we decreased the capital on your last request. By six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. I don't think it has to come specifically from one of the reserves. As I say, as far as I'm looking at it, you know, whether it's ARPA PILT or general reserves, they're the same thing. So I would just take it, uh, Commissioner Coleman would feel better if we took it from ARPA PILT. So we would decrease ARPA PILTS three million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred, ten dollar reserve. By that amount.
Yeah, I would definitely feel better taking that out of that one.
Okay, so there's two. Any other feedback?
I'm okay with that. I, I, I'm still looking at some of these numbers and I think we could probably cut a little deeper into the Board of Health. They're sitting on. On what, three quarters of a million dollars in reserves themselves. Maybe our liaison has a little more insight to that, but. Maybe our liaison has a little more insight to that, but.
No, I mean, I agree. They, they are sitting on that kind of money, so.
We're cutting our, cutting into our reserves in hopes of better times. I don't think it's too much to ask that these other folks cut into their reserves to hope for better times.
Yeah, and I mean, they obviously aren't gonna be happy about that, but nobody's gonna be happy about what we're doing. We aren't happy about it, so. Word happy really doesn't come into play as far as I'm concerned, but it's just not a pleasant situation, but with, with that much in reserves, I wouldn't be opposed to to somewhat of a reduction there. It's.
So, and I'm a little bit confused on that. So they, their request was 579, 666. Then in order to utilize some of that reserve, which I assume takes their cash on hand back down to the 120 days, they've submitted that they would be okay if we approved 515, 355.
Yes. Yeah, so their cash on hand, an agreement that was made a few years ago, said they needed to spend down their cash on hand. So that's why they subtracted the 64, 311.
I think we, we've set a limit on everybody of 120 days for our component agencies, but some of those, some of our component agencies have never come close to having 120 days cash on hand, and we're cutting those agencies. But if, if we can't get there, I understand. I, I support Rob's position on the, on the number if we don't want to make any deeper cut there.
Does that mean the 515, does that leave them at 120 days? Is that what you're saying? Oh. Yeah, so then we should just go with Rob's recommendation then, because it's already been considered.
I would also point out that we're probably gonna cut the library well below 120 days, so.
Plus the in-kind factor of providing a facility and all the costs that come along with that.
For the library you're talking?
All of them.
Oh, yeah, well, that's a bunch.
Okay, and then refresh my memory on when we need to have this approved, and can we do that in a regular meeting? Or does it have to be a special meeting?
It has to be a special meeting in the evening so that the public can attend if they want to. And currently, we have that scheduled for June 26th. So I need to have like an attentive budget to the newspaper by Monday so that it's advertised for 10 days before the public hearing.
Okay.
So the numbers don't have to be exact, but they need to be close to the final approval.
Sure.
Do we have a time for that meeting on the 26th? What time?
At 5:30.
And that gives you enough time to have it ready to go by the first?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're there, right?
Mr. Chairman, I, I can't say I'm happy about where we're at, but I'm okay with where we're at.
I agree with Commissioner Jones. I don't think there's anything happy about it. But, but I think, you know, we've, we have come to at least some semblance of agreement with respect to, to this on, on very difficult situations. And I, I am pleased that we're able to do that because it is very difficult when you, when you start with a $20 million deficit to, to come up with ways to to fund an, an annual budget in that situation. It's very difficult.
Okay, I, I obviously don't love it. But we've made some difficult decisions and some impactful decisions. At the same time, I guess we found a way. I, I would ask, obviously, we still have another meeting before our special meeting, although we're gonna advertise accordingly ahead of time, but I would assume if there's any changes that come afterwards, that's still acceptable as long as we're approving it on that 26th officially, I guess. So I would say we have a plan forward, but when you're hitting your liaison meetings, if there's room for more, I would ask for it. We'll see where it shakes out, but it sounds like that gets us there, I believe, if you're comfortable with that direction.
And did you want to have another workshop? I believe we had a one possibly scheduled for the 17th if we needed it. I mean, at that point, we can go over, I don't know if you want to do that or just, I just give you updates.
I guess I would ask you all, I mean, we could, even if it was just on the agenda, we can have a
Update, yeah.
An update, just to make sure numbers are out.
Be closer to the carryover.
Yeah. Let's just plan on that. We'll just do a part of the regular meeting, you know, at the end or something, and then if there's any significant changes, we can address them. Otherwise, we'll roll forward and then the 26th at 5:30.
Yes.
Okay. Is everyone good with that?
Sure.
And as far as, well, I guess you'll be advertising how we got to where we're at. It's been a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of back and forth, a lot of all over the place, I'm sure for those.
Yeah, I'll get everything updated and out to you, though.
Okay.
Of all the changes that we made today.
And the public will be able to see it once it's advertised. They will see the, the amounts for like we're seeing now, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be available next week, right?
Next Thursday. It'll be in the newspaper.
Okay, anything else? If not, appreciate everyone's work. Thanks for hanging in there with us. As usual, it's a enlightening budget season, but we're getting there. So thanks for your patience, and with no further business, we'll during the workshop.